All right, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. We have two special guests to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. But before I call on our guest, I also want to recognize, and she's standing and this is going to be awkward for Dr. Gordon, but our vice chair. For those of you who missed it, we had a large constituency of about, I'm guessing, 80 Orange County public school employees that drove to St. Pete this weekend to witness Dr. Gordon receiving her doctorate degree. Yes. And I am sure I'm not telling anybody in this audience anything they don't know, but in addition to being a full-time teacher in Osceola County, dealing with, yeah, dealing with, award-winning, praise your own pond, teacher in Osceola County, dealing with some very challenging students who have had a lot of troubles in their life, and she does a phenomenal, 24 years. She does that full-time, she does this full-time. She has more energy and passion than anything, anybody that I have met, and at the same time, she managed to also go back to school and get her doctorate degree. That is awesome. One more round of applause.
You let them know you were there and stole the show.
I did not mean to steal the show. I did not mean to steal the show. I was there and...
And Judge Holden.
And the judge who was making, who did the commencement speech, recognized me in the audience, and I was like, oh, boy. Yeah, that was very nice, but, yeah, we had a great, just a great turnout and so much to be proud of. All right, so with that, let me call Riley Risa. Do I have your name right? Riley Risa? Come on up, Riley. And Ava Resnick. Ava, come on up. They're going to join us from Winter Park High School and Hillcrest Elementary School, and they, as I said, are going to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask everybody if you'd like to, to rise.
Will you please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you.
And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, ladies. They're going to stay up here with me. Pardon me? They're going to stay up here with me when I step up. Awesome, okay. Okay. So we wanted to tell you a little bit about these challenged, these talented young ladies. Ava, you're standing, and we wanted to recognize you as well as Riley, and we wanted to thank you for the important role that you're playing in joining us here this evening. Earlier this year, the Foundation of Orange County Public Schools held a Top Talent Showcase at the Student Talent in the Performing and Visual Arts. I think most of the board members attended that. I'm sure a lot of you did as well. I know even our superintendent and our council, Mr. Rodriguez, were there. Well, with us tonight are Riley Risa, who was the fan favorite winner, and Ava Resnick, who came in first place in visual arts. And for those of you who missed that, I'm telling you, it was phenomenal, the talent that these two ladies, ah, yes, it's up on the overhead, the talent with these two young ladies was remarkable. So let me ask if, Debbie, can you join us at the podium and give us a little bit more information?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, School Board members, and Dr. Jenkins, and this great audience. I'm so excited that you get to see what these kids did. Top Talent was held on April 27th at the Plaza Live. We had revived this event after a four- or five-year hiatus, and we had a phenomenal turnout of student talent. You can see Ava's work up there on the screen. She won for the elementary category for artwork. That's a tempura piece, right? Is that right, Ava? It's tempura paint? Or is it watercolor?
Oh, my gosh.
I think it's tempura, oil and tempura. Yeah? And we also, I believe Dr. Janella Krail is here tonight to represent her student, Katie Hanks, from Blankner. Katie won first place in the middle school division. That is, for those of you who may not be able to see it clearly, that is a painted ceramic plate. And for those of you who do ceramics, Katie managed to make that plate almost completely flat, which is extremely hard to do. Those two young ladies were two of over 900 art submissions that we received. We selected 18 to be able to show at the event. They were on display for people to look at and choose their fan favorites. So we're thrilled to have the visual arts represented. But of course, it is primarily a talent show. And Riley, as you've already mentioned, won our fan favorite for the Performing Arts, and I'm hoping we're going to have sound on here. But this is a video snippet of her piece. It's a song that she wrote herself and performed.
Hang on a second. Victor, can you hear us? We can't, we don't have sound. Please run it again.
I'm going to reset here.
Yeah.
And let Adam give me a hand. While he's doing that, I just want to let you all know, Riley's piece is specifically about bullying and how to overcome that. It is a piece called "Broken." She wrote it herself and performed it that night, won fan favorite, and this, what we're hoping to show you, is a video you can find on YouTube of her, of her performance that she did separately. It's a very professionally done video. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that sound on for you. If you click forward. And click again. So mark your calendars for April 25th because we're bringing Top Talent back this spring. In addition to prizes for schools, for the winners and the students themselves receiving prizes, we were able to raise over $53,000 for the arts. And all of that goes back to the arts programs here at OCPS. So thank you, ladies, very much. I believe the board would like to shake your hands.
Absolutely, thank you. I don't think anybody would disagree with me when I say that it belongs to Performing Arts Center. It's just over the top. All right, with us tonight also is a guest, Mr. Leo Silva of Silva's Painting. Through his partnership, students at Lake Weston, Rosemont, and Ivy Lane Elementary Schools receive free bikes for participating in the Perfect Attendance Program. To tell us more about the Foundation's president and chief is our chief communications officer, Scott Howitt. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Leo's on his way up here, so talk about him a little bit. Board members, Dr. Jenkins, thank you. Back in January, Foundation for Orange County Schools board member Jose Fernandez introduced us to Leo Silva, who's the owner of Silva Painting, Pressure Washing, and Striping. Mr. Silva was very interested in making a meaningful investment in our schools, making an impact, and we spoke to him about our community outreach schools, the schools of Lake Weston, Rosemont, Ivy Lane, that the principal said they were experiencing some issues of related to attendance, to coming on time to school, and what we could do about that. We asked Mr. Silva if he'd be interested in supporting the Perfect Attendance Program, which was an 11-week program. Every student that had perfect attendance for a week during the 11 weeks got, received one entry into a drawing for a new bicycle. The students weren't up to 11 entries over that time period. They had to have perfect attendance during that week, and a bike would be awarded at each grade level. So Mr. Silva, he immediately went out and bought three bikes, put them on display up in the cafeteria, and the principal started talking it up and talking about making sure that they were coming on time, that they were in school, and really trying, and that became the emphasis. So at the end of the 10 weeks, they drew names and awarded six bicycles and gift cards for helmets at each of the schools for one student in each grade level. Principal Sam Danner from Ivy Lane, he actually said in an email that their overall attendance had increased 26 percentage points from February to May, just talking up the program. A fifth-grade student and the winner from Lake Weston made it all worthwhile when she said, "This is my first bike ever." And so let me just, I'll just play this, let me play this next, play the slide here. There's the, so there's, there's some of the kids from Rosemont, and there's kids from Ivy Lane, and there, and you see the girl on the left, second from the end, that was her first bike ever.
Awesome.
So every, tonight, we want to recognize Mr. Silva for his dedication to our students and his willingness to jump in and sponsor this program. In addition to the student program, he also offered the winner of the Teacher Attendance Program the choice of an iPad or a tablet, so they also were included at the three schools. And we hope to continue the program next year and expand it to more of our community outreach schools. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Leo Silva at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that it is a privilege, you know, to be able to do this for CPS, to give it back, to be able to give it back. And the reason that I say give it back is because years ago, when they started working for CPS, we were like a very small company. It was my dad and I and a couple of painters. And today, we employ over 30 employees, and it's all because of OCPS, the Minority Program that they have that is managed by Dr. Hanson. So we are where we are today because of that, you know, and then also people like Mr. Pacheco, I think he's here somewhere.
Absolutely, he is.
Yeah, when he used to work at the procurement, you know, years ago. And yeah, and, you know, OCPS can count on me for the following year. I'm here to help in whatever I can do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'd love to thank you. Come on, boys.
And Mrs. Jacobs, it's really nice to see you here. I have done a lot of work for you on the other side of the fence.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Very good work. Good to see you here, too.
Yep, thank you.
You are also paying it forward by hiring 30 people in our community that have a good-paying job and a career opportunity with you, so thank you for that. Let me remember, recognize Member Gould before we move on.
You know, I have the privilege of serving as the appointed school board member to the Foundation, and it has been an amazing journey over the last several years to really see the partnerships that have come forward, like Mr. Silva and around Top Talent and our Hall of Fame and our community-based school programs, and I could go on and on and take up a lot of time tonight, which we don't have time for. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you for really bringing so many wonderful partners to bear for our students and for our staff. There's resources in the schools because of the work of Orange County Public Schools Foundation and those board members and community partners that would not be possible without them, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, we are going to move on now to an introduction of newly appointed administrators. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you. We have eight tonight. First, we have Charlene Charles, who is an instructional coach at the School Transformation Office. She'll be the new assistant principal at Rosemont Elementary School.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Rosemont Elementary School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. Brown Cannon, Dr. Wyndham, Mrs. Leftercus, Mrs. Flores, Mrs. McGarvey, Mrs. Smith-Sad, Mrs. Supernard, Mrs. Davis-Wilson, Mr. Franz, Ms. Neely, Mrs. Antonio, and all the senior administrators and coaches in the School Transformation Office. I'd like to thank my mom, right there, and friends who are here today, and my many family members and friends watching the online streams. Finally, thank you for Rosemont Elementary Team members, and Principal Gibson, right there, who came out to welcome me this evening. Thank you.
Joshua Corley, resource teacher at Walker Middle, will be the new assistant principal at Walker Middle.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Walker Middle School. I'd also like to recognize my professional mentors, Mrs. Rebecca Watson, Dr. Leanne Bradshaw, Dr. Matthew Jengger, Mr. Robert Remetti, and Dr. Drew Eccleston. I'd also like to introduce and thank my family members who are with me this evening, my wife Hannah, my sister Hannah Faith, and my father and mother Lance and Eswan. Finally, thank you to the Walker Middle School staff and Principal Watson for coming to welcome me this evening.
Cruz Diaz, with resource teacher at Eagles Nest, will be the new assistant principal at Endeavor Elementary School.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Endeavor Elementary. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Britt Dispenza, Demetra Clemens, and Darius Adamson. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family, my wife Ashley, my son Baby Cruz, my daughter Isabella, and my 10-day-old daughter Ariana. It's been a fight trying to keep them quiet this whole time. Finally, thank you, daughter Ellis, and the whole Endeavor Elementary family for coming out here to welcome me this evening. Thank you.
Allison Diane Garsky, with Dean at Sally Ride Elementary, will be the new assistant principal at Sally Ride.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Sally Ride Elementary School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. Angela Osborne, who could not be here tonight, but who pushed me onto my path in leadership, Dr. Patricia Fritzler, who provided me support and guidance, and Mrs. Edme Figueroa, and Mrs. Raquel Flores, who offered me practical opportunities to prepare me for this role. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members who are here, my supportive husband Chris, two of my three sons, Jordan and Ian, my father Jim, and my many friends who are considered family. Finally, thank you to the Sally Ride Team members, my school family, and Principal Flores, who came out to welcome me this evening.
Adrian Green, reading specialist at Pinar, will be the new assistant principal at Pinar.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Pinar Elementary School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Joshua Harold Gladden and Stacy Tannenbaum. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are here with me this evening, my mom Bessie, my sister Denise, and my son James. Finally, thank you to Pinar Team members and Principal Gladden, who came out to welcome me this evening.
Erin Willis, assistant principal at North Elementary School, will be the assistant principal at Lawton Childs Elementary.
Thank you, School Board members and Superintendent Jenkins and staff for the opportunities to support and lead at Lawton Childs Elementary School. I would like to thank, coming, I'm coming from out of county, but I'd like to thank one of my first principals that I worked with in a different county, Ms. Hunt, who is here at Orange County now, it's quite nice to run into her. I'd also like to thank my family who's here to support me, my mom, who's a teacher in Orange County Public Schools, and my children, and father who are in the back tonight. And thank you to Lawton Childs Elementary Staff and Principal Dennis Gonzalez, who's here that came out this evening to welcome me.
In case you were wondering, no, it wasn't North Lake. North Elementary is in Okeechobee. William Bond actually is going to be our, who is previously Executive Director of Multilingual and Corrective Programs, is actually going to be the area superintendent for the Southeast Learning Community.
Thank you, board members, Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Maria Vasquez, for providing me this opportunity to serve the Southeast Learning Community. I'd like to recognize some professional mentors in my life and my journey here in Orange County. I want to start with my first principal, who is Polly Roper, and I had Dr. Robert Abosa, Mr. Greg Moody, Dr. Anna Diaz, Dr. James Lawson, Dr. Maria Vasquez, and Dr. Kathy Schuler. Thank you for believing in me and for your wisdom and leadership. I also want to thank and introduce my wonderful wife, which is right here, Maria Alvarez. Thank you for your support, and of course, my son, who is a little bit further down, for all their support, understanding, and encouragement. I look forward to working with the Southeast Learning Community. Thank you.
Brandy Kane, program specialist with our secondary math, will be the new assistant principal at Meadowbrook Middle.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Meadowbrook Middle School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Jennifer Bellinger, Sasha Russ, Mary Ellen Freeman, Pamela Vialba, and Rob Bixler. I would also like to thank my family members that are watching via live stream from Fort Lauderdale, my parents, Terry and Deborah Salisbury, my sisters Brittany and Bria, and all of my extended family and friends. Finally, thank you to the Meadowbrook Team and Principal Dr. David Hardrick, who have come to welcome me this evening.
That's it, board.
All right, that is awesome. Okay, we are going to move on then to our, we would move on to our normal agenda, but I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. Administrators, you're free to go. Yeah, thank you very much. I'm like, what am I missing? Yeah, you're relieved, you can stay around if you want, but you don't have to, and if you leave, you'll free up seats.
Before the fire marshal comes.
Before the, yeah, I didn't hear that. And we'll give everybody a minute to reconfigure here. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's do this one more time. If there's a seat next to you, open. Put your hand up so people can see any seats next to you. Thank you to the lady in the middle, fourth row back, there's a seat next to her. It's not the easiest one to get to, but it's a real seat. Anybody else standing, want a seat? There's a seat up in the front here. Where else? Any other seats? There's still a seat right up in the middle, fourth row back. We've got a couple of, we got a seat over here to your far right, we got a seat to the far left. I feel like I'm back to the Jimmy Buffett song. All right, those of you who are still standing, I assume that's by decision, okay? All right. All right, we're much better to accommodate everybody here. Here's where we stand. Next item on our agenda is a strategic plan update. That's going to take us about 20 minutes, and because we have so many people here that wish to address the board on something, I know that's really important to you, and we're taking time away from your, your family life, what we'd like to do, without objection from the board, is bring the strategic plan back after we've taken up our full agenda, and we can have that presentation, but we won't be doing it on your time. So without objection, we will proceed forward. And Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, Madam Chair. Item 502 and 503 being moved to non-consent. Item 504 was actually an addition to the agenda, also being moved to non-consent. Additionally, item 809 and 810 are being withdrawn for consideration at a later time.
All right, and before we proceed to take action on the agenda, the Chair does find cause to amend the agenda as requested, but let me first pause for a moment to solicit public input. For anyone here who is wanting to address anything that remains on the consent agenda, then we would ask that you do that before we take up the consent agenda in just a moment. For anyone who is here for the items that have been pulled off the consent agenda, which I think is pretty much everybody else in the room, when we get to those items, the OESPA contract and the CTA contract, we'll solicit and request public input at that point in time. And I have this long list of requirements that I need to read. Let me just start with, "We value your input and we're really glad you're here." Having said that, there are some procedures that we follow in accordance with parliamentary procedure, and one of them is to remind you that this is an opportunity to testify to the board. It's not a debate session. You may get some feedback from board members, but for the most part, you probably won't, but that's not because they're not listening and they don't care. If there are issues that you raise that we need to address, we will be addressing it either through staff or through board members following the meeting if they don't get addressed here today. And you'll have three minutes to address the board. Probably most of you have been here at some point or another. Give your name and address first, and we start the timer after that. And most of you are here for the earlier comments, so I think we're good to go. As I mentioned, thumbs up, you're in support, double thumbs up, you're wildly in support, and you would be double voting, and that'd be illegal, but you can get away with it here. Thumbs down, if you're really not in favor of something, no boos, no hisses, no applause, no cheers, and none of this because it's confusing, at least to me. With that, we will proceed, and is there a motion, a motion to amend the agenda before we vote on the agenda? Motion by Member Cobert, seconded by Member Bird, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, before we take up the consent agenda, any members of the public, I don't have any speaker cards right now, any members of the public that were here for an item that is still on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Motion by, by, by Member Gould, seconded by Dr. Gordon, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now on to... We are now on to item, was 501, it is now 1701, and that's the OESPA contract. Dr. Jenkins, do you want to lead off with any comments before I take public testimony?
I believe, actually, the OESPA president was here to speak. Of course, this actually reached agreement at the bargaining table with the board's chief negotiator and the OESPA team. They have brought it forward for the board's approval, so they may take it out for ratification vote.
All right, and Mr. Pollard, are you here? There you are. Do you want to approach the podium, you want to offer some, some words? Wonderful to have you here with us.
Well, all right then, Ron Pollard, 1869 Amoco Boulevard, Apopka, Florida, 32712. As OESPA president and the loan negotiator group for our classified employees, I must first say, congratulations to Ms. Gordon. I'm going to have to write that OESPA history. You know what I mean. That being said, with the agreement that we reached, I want to thank the school board. I want to thank Jim Prouser, who's the new HR director, Leanne Blackmore, and my whole bargaining team for coming to this agreement. While I don't believe it necessarily reaches the point that we would like to see it, it's a step in the right direction. So, I would hope that it's ratified and that we can keep on moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to, with no further comments, for the OESPA contract? Is there a motion to approve item 1703?
Motion.
Motion by member Gould, seconded by Dr. Gordon, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to item 1703, and 1703 is the contract for CTA, and Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Once again, bargaining unit chaired by our own Jim Prouser, who is our lead negotiator for the school board, and Wendy Dormel, who is president of CTA, and her team worked diligently to reach agreement on this, tentative agreement on this particular item from the board's offer and their negotiation and agreement. From this point, it would go out to 14,000 and more, 14,000-plus teachers for ratification. The request is that the board approve it to move forward in the process.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So we have a number of speakers, I think everybody is now in the room, but let me read off five at a time, just so you know where you are. Ashley Modesto, I need to confess ahead of time, I'm really bad with names and sometimes reading calligraphy that, although you guys are probably a lot better because you're, most of you are teachers, and I'm used to being at the county commissioner, and I don't know what the heck they, the people that filled these out were, because they were in like Greek, so this might go better for me. So Ashley Modesto as the first speaker, Cheryl Posey as our second speaker, Michelle Ramirez, third speaker, really good handwriting, Lisa Marie Lewis, fourth speaker, and Megan Cost. And in any order that you get to the podium for those five speakers.
Welcome. Ashley Modesto, 489 Burn Tree Lane, Apopka, Florida, 32712. I am currently a math teacher at Edgewater High School, about to enter into my fourth year. I like to call myself an OCPS kid. Around the same time that I began walking was the same time that my family began their careers with OCPS. And from kindergarten till I graduated, I was a part of OCPS. I was a sub when I was in college and accepted my teaching position shortly after. This has been my life, essentially, and I have had some of the most amazing teachers, but I'm heartbroken because I've seen them take early retirement. I have seen them go into other careers because they can't support their family. They can't support the family, they, my mom is a single mom, and she struggled, and she is so powerful and was able to provide for me and my siblings, but it was through working other jobs, taking other opportunities, having less time with us because of the financial situation in which she was. I am here because I am, I was not the easiest student, and I'm a teacher because I've had some amazing teachers in my life, and it broke my heart to see them leave. And as I begin my career, I am hesitant to continue in education because I want to ensure that whenever I have a family, I am able to support them, I'm able to provide for them, I'm able to ensure that my children won't have to be in student loan debt. My children will have everything they need, from healthcare costs to a proper education. And I'm just, I'm worried, I hear from my colleagues, I'm seeing them leaving, it is a crisis what's going on right now. I feel like there is no better investment than education, and trust me, I'm a math teacher, so I do numbers pretty well. And I think we need to, a serious reevaluation on where the money goes because we're losing extraordinary teachers at a concerning rate. We're losing them, and I'm terrified. I'm considered a veteran teacher, and I'm, I've got to hit four years, I should not be a veteran teacher. And I want to thank you for your time, thank you for allowing me to speak. I also want to thank Wendy and the bargaining team for their hard work and their dedication, and I really hope something could be done because if not, in the end of the day, no one will suffer more than our students.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Megan Cost, 7772 Rigby Street, Windermere, Florida, 34786. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I have been a teacher in Orange County Public Schools for three years. The school that I taught at was a, currently, I'm changing schools, but it was a Title I school for the first year I was there, and then it was no longer a Title I school. And as I'm sure you know, it was reported in January of 2019 that we had over 2,000 teaching positions available. That's 2,000 positions that were needed in our schools to keep our class sizes down, to give all of our students the individualized attention that they need. I cannot tell you what a difference four students, four more students in your classroom need, mean to your classroom. So my concern with this new contract is, how does this help us retain current OCPS teachers who are working very, very, very hard, very long hours, on their time off, on time they don't get paid, and who may not have a stable second income, dual income, may not have a stable living situation in order to make ends meet? And then on top of that, how do we retain, or excuse me, how do we attract teachers to this profession? Because I can tell you, I've watched people move out of this profession to other professions in the middle of the school year, and I know no one wants to do that, we're not in this for the money. And what happens to those kids, I can tell you, is that they get added to our other classes. So now I have two more students that I have to try to fit into small group instruction to try to meet their needs. So that is my concern with this new contract, is that we cannot be competitive with the other industries in Orange County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Ramirez, my address is 5961 Branch Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32822. I wrote this, so I'm sorry if I don't make eye contact, it's nothing personal. Distinguished school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and Madam Chair, every day I drive myself to work in a car my in-laws pay for. After car repairs kept running up and my pay kept dragging, they decided I deserved a reliable car. Every month, my father-in-law pays into the school system $220. I come home to a house my extended family owns. See, my salary could only afford me a place where residents were commonly robbed and stabbed. My family decided that they, that they wanted me to have a safe place to live. So every month, my grandfather loses $400 in rent revenue so I could live in his house. Every week, I pay the school system hundreds of dollars in unpaid labor. I work on the weekends, I spend time grading and creating new content off of my contract. I hear the story of a 4% increase, and I see teachers buy into it. They see the percentage and glaze over the rest, assuming that that is their raise, but it is misleading, as many do not see 4% or anywhere near 4%. Many teachers do not know how the salary system works from year to year. I'm on year six, I've asked CTA, I've asked payroll, and I've asked coworkers, and I'm still unclear. Sometimes I don't even know what my true financial situation will be until months in, when I finally see merit pay. Many teachers don't understand what they are agreeing to when they vote on the salary. How do we really expect anyone to properly cast a vote if they don't understand what yes really means? We know what yes and no mean. We know that when we have an emergency expense, it says yes, but our wallets say no. Teachers say yes to second jobs, tutoring, teaching seven periods, and debt. When we ask if we could get a sustainable income, we are told no. You say you don't have the money, but we don't have the money either. It was mentioned on the news that we choose lesser coverage. The suggestion is an illusion. Many are already on the cheapest plan, and no matter, there is no choice when it comes to the 40% increase in PCP costs. Teachers are among the most depressed professions, and the only information regarding healthcare that I've been finding is no out-of-network. The benefits department doesn't even have information, I called them today. And yet, we are expected to accept the offer. The only thing I know is that it's going to cost me an extra $100 a month just to keep my insurance for my husband. I cannot vote for that kind of a loss. We keep trying new things to fix the broken education system, close reading and DPLCs, and technology, and testing, and integration, and evaluation, and buzzwords, but the education system is going to continue to be broken if the teachers are broke. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job with the restraint there. Started to get away with it, but you pulled it back, and I appreciate it, but your feedback is helpful. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Marie Lewis, and I live at 2008 Mosher Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32810. When I get in an airplane and something's wrong, the pilot comes on and says, "In the case of an emergency, please adjust your face mask, your oxygen mask first, before you help others." I will tell you that in the case of emergency, we are here. We are here because I can put on my oxygen mask, but I cannot help others because I am not getting paid enough. Teachers are having to work three jobs, taking away from their students, from their real families. Teachers cannot fix their homes, teachers cannot pay for cars, teachers can't live on their own without living with their parents. Several of the new teachers, I'm old, I've been at the job for 21 years now. While I don't do it for the money, my mortgage company would like me to do it for the money, my credit card company would like me to do it for the money, my water bill would like me to do it for the money, and my car payment would like me to do it for the money. When I say to them, and I try to pay my bills by saying, "You know, I'm a teacher, you don't want me to live in this, you want me to live in this house, right? You just give people houses because that's what you do for a living. You enjoy giving people a mortgage." It doesn't work. And so while you say it's a 4% raise and that you're trying to have competitive teachers, and you're trying to be competitive, and you're trying to get new teachers, and good teachers, and solid teachers, so that we can send these children out into the future, it's not working. People don't want to work for nickels and dimes anymore. People don't want to work and become poorer and poorer with each passing day. I don't want to work for free. When you have people who get $30,000, your new chief communications officer is now making That's a $30,000 raise from his previous position. You can't, I can't even begin to fathom where you would come up with a $136,000 position. The director of media relations is making $83,000. She's not in a classroom. And while I don't begrudge people making money, aren't they in it because they enjoy it? Let them make $40,000 and let them live with their parents. But we can't do this anymore. God forbid, my kid fall down and need an operation. God forbid, I get cancer. I would have to move in with my 75-year-old parents because I would lose my house. When you say a 4% raise, it needs to be a solid, honest 4%, and not 4% hidden behind insurance costs, and hidden behind, hidden fees, and all this one, the capital credit cards cost you. You are partners, we do this together, so when you say 4%, it needs to be an honest 4%, not with hidden fees, that if I get cancer, I lose everything, my home, my car, my livelihood, everything. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next five speakers, Christine Rickman, Coach Nolan, Jamie Larson, Zaidi, Duck Pano. Correct me when you get up, if you would. Karen Lee. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Cheryl Posey, I am a school psychologist. My address is 3104 Lake Gene Drive, Orlando, Florida. I would like to just speak to the board on behalf of myself as a school psychologist. I would like to thank our CTA for accepting us into the union, as well as our CTA reps for bringing for us. This is my 18th year as a school psychologist, this is my fifth in Florida, and this is my third at OCPS. I'm very pleased that after two years of bargaining, we finally have a willingness to negotiate our, the terms of the contract. We, per hour, we're making quite a bit less than the surrounding counties, so the fact that we are now getting some days off, it does level that out a bit. I think it makes us more competitive as far as school psychologists are concerned. Nothing that I'm saying up here indicates anything that these fine people are saying out here. I support them, they are my colleagues, they are my friends, and they do an amazing job in the classroom. But I do want to say that with the extra time off that school psychologists are being given, at no cost to the board, I will be able to visit my family up north. When I first took the position at OCPS, I didn't quite realize how much vacation time I was getting. It's not a lot, as per the current contract. I haven't visited my 75-year-old father in over a year. I have two nephews and a niece that I have never met. I very much look forward to seeing them, to visiting them up north, and for the time that I will get in order to visit them, and to just visit with family. I will be able to meet the daughter of a friend of mine, who's more like a sister. I've never met her, I am her guardian, and I have never met her because I have not had enough time off in order to go and visit, visit my family. I know there's still work to do, I just don't want to lose the gains that we have made towards making the district more competitive to my professional, to my profession, and I'd really like to meet my nephews, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christine Rickman, I live on 29 West Albatros Street in Apopka, Florida, 32712. Okay. Good evening. My first year of teaching, I taught fifth, sixth combined in a very small, one-school district in central Illinois. Because I had some master's classes completed, and I was an assistant coach for track, I made $39,700. My rent was $500 for a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath apartment, with utilities being about $100 bucks. I could easily support myself and my husband, who was finishing his masters, with this salary. That was eight years ago. I start with my first year because it's crazy to think, eight years later, a starting teacher in the country's ninth-largest district only earns $300 more, and the cost of living is significantly higher. I looked up apartments with a max of $500, and would you believe, the only ones I could find were senior living facilities? We can say the cliche's over and over. I never went into teaching to get rich, or I love the kids. While I do not expect to be rich, I do expect a livable wage without worrying about what I would do if something ever happened to my husband. I can love my students and have enough respect for myself and this profession to demand for the district to do better. Teaching isn't a hobby, or a supplemental income, is a career held by people who have, at the very least, a bachelor's degree and are certified to teach. Pay us as such. I wish OCPS would invest more in their teachers and less in things or unnecessary programs. I wish OCPS would stop viewing students as data points or products. I wish OCPS would stop taking the human component out of education. Education and business are not synonymous. Education and business are not synonymous. I wish OCPS would stop treating them as such. And I really wish OCPS would stop mandating things that make our job harder than what it already is. With the blanketed statements being sent to the many teachers that the district doesn't have money to pay us more, I say, "That's an incorrect statement. Of course OCPS has money. It's just not allocated in a way that helps teachers or students." We, teachers, are the district's most valuable asset. We are on the front lines with our kids, helping them grow as learners and as citizens. Telling us, "We appreciate you, but we're not paying you a fair wage," means nothing. Do better. I will leave you with the words of the great Dalai Lama. "It is not enough to be compassionate; you must also act." Thanks.
Thank you.
You did pretty good. It's Zaida Doc Pano, 8827 Sperry Street, Orlando, Florida, 32827. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Jenkins, staff, and teachers. I'm here today as a parent of two wonderful daughters that attend Lorient Park Elementary. One of them's with me this evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of LPE parents because we firmly believe that teachers deserve more. Like many other Orange County residents, I'm not originally from Florida. I grew up in upstate New York and had the privilege of attending stellar public schools. When my husband retired from the Navy in 2016, the Orlando VA brought us to central Florida, and we settled in Lake Nona. We were apprehensive about the quality of education the public school system could provide for our daughters. We've never lived in an area where so many families choose private and homeschooling as a norm. Thankfully, we've been blessed with phenomenal teachers at Lorient Park. We've seen the amazing impact great teachers have had on our children, and it's hard to articulate the appreciation and love we have for them. Since we've lived here, I've done a lot of volunteering at school. And I've lost count of the number of parents who say, "I'm exhausted." I don't know how they do it. And seriously, we don't know how you guys do it. It breaks our hearts to know that teachers are tasked with the responsibility of building the foundations of our futures, and yet they're struggling to pay for housing, their families, and rising health costs. How can the county attract and retain highly qualified teachers when the current ones are being forced to work second and third jobs to make ends meet? Retaining highly qualified teachers was the number-one priority when you voted to extend the one-mill property tax rate. OCPS collected $257 million last year. There must be a better CTA contract that the teachers' union and school board can agree upon. There's immense support for teachers across the county, but not everyone is able to be here tonight. That's why I set up the petition on change.org to give them the opportunity to show their support. And as of 4:00 PM today, we've received over 7,000 signatures. And this number continues to grow. Teaching may be a labor of love, but as we've heard tonight, teachers can't live on love alone. They should be adequately and fairly compensated for their efforts. Please vote no to the current CTA package and continue negotiations. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello. Jamie Larson, 1805 Greenbrook Court, Oviedo, Florida, 32766. Most of us are here tonight because we don't find the contract offer acceptable. I find the contract offer insulting. However, I don't want to talk about money. I want to talk about relationships. I would like to present you with a version of show and tell, but this is tell and show. I do not speak for everyone here, but I know that much of what I have to say, to some degree, applies to most that are here. You tell me that you appreciate that I go above and beyond, working hundreds of extra hours each year to help students to create curriculum, to simply complete general tasks like grading that cannot be accomplished in 37 and 1/2 hours a week. But you show me that you really don't value my personal time or my family time. You show me that you expect me to work those hours without compensation. You show me that you do not appreciate me. You tell me that you value my education and training, that my certifications make me an asset to the district. You tell me that my education, and I have a PhD, makes me a stronger educator. But you show me that it really doesn't matter. You pay a pittance of a stipend for advanced degrees, but only if you can't find a loophole for not paying that stipend at all. You do not reimburse me for courses, tests, or certifications you expect me to pay for those things that I value, while you show me that you clearly do not value them. You tell me there is not another penny for raises or compensation. But you show me that you value those personnel who manipulate the legalities of statute and contract language by finding funding for recurring funds for annual increases for them. This relationship is like a marriage. Most of us were courted. We were told how amazing we are. We were told how valuable we are. And we believed it. We wanted to help. We wanted to make a difference. We wanted to be a part of something greater than ourselves, and we committed. We became partners with you voluntarily, and then the honeymoon ended. This marriage between the teachers and the school board and administrators, we should be in counseling. Any ethical counselor would immediately see the abusive, codependent nature of this relationship. That counselor would advise us as teachers to stop enabling you. The counselor would tell us as teachers that we should stop rescuing you by working beyond our contract to keep pushing student achievement. We should stop enabling your mistreatment of us with our blind optimism. As teachers, we need to not fool ourselves into thinking, "Maybe this time will be the time you really change. Maybe this will be the last time you hurt us." No, we as teachers need to acknowledge what you keep showing us is important to you, and we as teachers need to consider reevaluating the viability of this relationship because it is not healthy. For your part in saving this relationship, why not show us that you're willing to take on the responsibility to advocate openly for additional funding? In leadership positions, you do not get to walk away from that responsibility or the people you're supposed to serve. You have the positional authority. Show us you can couple that with moral authority that's inherent in supporting kids. Then maybe you can show us positive change.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Lee. I live at 8083 Upper Purse Circle, Orlando, Florida, 32827. Hello. As I already mentioned, my name is Karen Lee, and I'm an OCPS elementary school teacher. I'm here today to speak to the issue of OCPS teacher salary in light of the recent 2019-20 salary increases presented by the CTA. Let me share a little bit about myself. I entered education late in my career, spending the first 27 years working for a variety of central Florida businesses in marketing, brand management, and corporate communications. But a few years back, I decided to make a change. See, I grew up in Florida and spent my years in Florida public schools. I love school, mostly because of the amazing teachers that I had who inspired me to be the best student I could be. If you ask me what I wanted to be as a child, I would always enthusiastically tell you I wanted to be a teacher. In fact, when I started college, I was enrolled in the College of Education, but then someone whispered in my ear, "Teachers don't make any money. You don't want to be a teacher." So I followed my head instead of my heart. Fast forward to four years ago, I decided to let my heart lead me. I followed an alternative path to entering the career I always wanted to enter. And this year, I finished my second year as a kindergarten teacher with OCPS. On the table is a proposal that would increase my compensation by $500 for cost-of-living increase. For me, at my salary, that's a 1.25% cost-of-living, when the government says cost-of-living is really 2.8%. And a performance-based salary increase that has decreased from previous years. This is not including a significant increase in our insurance premium and across-the-board costs because my family is on my insurance. For me, this is a pay cut. Last night, my husband and I had a serious conversation as to whether we could actually afford for me to continue being a teacher. It broke my heart. I love being a teacher, and I think I'm a pretty good one, receiving highly effective my first year of teaching and expecting highly effective my second based on observations and my students' test scores. Most of you are on this board because you ran a campaign that included promises to advocate for higher teacher salaries, and I thank you for that. I ask that you please remember that. As you know, OCPS is ranked fourth in the state for size and ninth in the country. Yet we are currently ranked 21st in the state for salary and 46th in the country. Our average teacher salary falls below the counties we are most closest in size to. If OCPS's focus is to be the top producer of successful students in the nation, shouldn't OCPS also be the top recruiter of highly effective teachers to help those students become successful? You can help make that happen. Imagine if the news headlines could focus on our success in this area. If OCPS can increase salaries to be more in line with where we rank in size, maybe we can make that headline read, "OCPS is among the top 10 places to work in the state." Now that's something to be proud of.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Kat, Vice Chair, Dr. Kat, I'm not sure we have to get, Ms. Gallo, you're my rep, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Williams, my colleagues and peers and parents and the OCPS family. My name's Coach Nolan, Mark Nolan. I reside at 142594 Stoke Avenue. How about those pioneers?
Yes.
Hey, I got a quick question because I left my glasses at home. I've been redoing my notes. I forgot my cellphone. But I'm a little confused on something. We went from consent to non-consent. I mean, are you guys voting on this tonight? Are you going, are you planning to vote?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah. I don't know if you want to start the timer for a second.
Consent, non-consent?
Yes. So consent means there's no discussion. We just vote on it. When we take it off of consent, then we have opened it up to have debate and discussion.
Okay. I don't want to borrow my glasses. No, this changes everything. Oh, okay, look, I'm, listen, I'm going to ask you not to vote tonight. Clearly, this thing is not going to pass. I've never seen anything like this, and it's growing. It's just getting bigger and bigger. More and more people coming on board, and we just, we need to save the postage. We need to save the printing. We need to hit the brakes a little bit. We need to stop and take a look at this. And unfortunately, the bargaining that has occurred is not representing the wishes or the concerns of our people. And conversely, and I know there's some people very strongly that this is a good, you know, a good concept because it's not. And, I mean, the money is there. I mean, I've been doing this a long time, and I want to go back on something here. The last three years, the board has been graciously giving a mid-year retention bonus around December, January was the first year, about three years ago. I've been here a long time. I never even got a Christmas turkey. And that was really nice, and it was very much appreciated. In the following year, we got another one. And this past year, it was negotiated. It was put in there $500. And it's been from Dr. Jenkins and the finance people finding the money and coming to you and giving it to us. I know how it works. But this year in October, another $250 came up, and again, we appreciate it by the board. Well, actually, it was a previous board, so if you want to one-up them, Mike could do a little better. You got an opportunity here. God, I'm thinking about it. But, and here we go. I mean, it's pretty much the same proposal as last year, but more money's coming in from the state. The one mill's doing good now. I mean, there's a little more coming in there. We can do better. And you know, we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't because of the insurance. That's the thing that I feel has triggered the whole issue, and I think we really should take a look at that. And so I would ask, with all due respect, because I'm going to tell you something I love. I love Orange County schools. I do. And I love you guys, and I'd probably die for you. Dr. Jenkins, please pull your bargaining team back together. Ms. Dormel, let's regroup with our folks. We got to meet. We have to talk. We got to get our people together. Let's go home early tonight. Let's, you know, hit the, we usually don't ratify our contract till October. Sometimes it's late as March, and why have we gotten into this rut before the budget's even?
Coach, I have to hold everybody to the same standard, and your time went off.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Gallo. Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Forgive me. Did we hear from Jamie Larson? We did. I'm, thank you. Barbara Woods, Jennifer Erickson, Mary May, Jessica Torrance. This is really good handwriting. And Diana Moore. Whenever you're ready.
Barbara Woods, 14634 Astina Way, Orlando, Florida, 32837. My name is Barbara Woods, and I have been a math teacher in OCPS for the last 12 years. I have emailed every one of the board members this week about my story, so I'm not going to go into it. I'm speaking in regard to how the contract is impacting me. Okay? These are my facts. Okay? I received a larger raise last year when the student FTE was .47 cents. This year's student FTE is $74. With enrollment at approximately $200,000, that is $14,706. More money. Even if we take only half of that, because prior to becoming a teacher, I was an accountant. Okay? Even if we only take half of that amount, because I know that there are certain restrictions on things, there should be more money for a raise. As an Orange County voter, I voted yes for the 1 million referendum that was used to retain highly effective teachers. Again, more money. Okay? Orange County is giving us raises of 4% of salary, not 4% to each teacher. For veterans teachers that are out there, their raises nowhere near 4%. My take-home pay this year, including a seventh-period supplement, department chair, and Beta Club sponsor, with taxes, 403B, pension contributions, insurance, and deferred pay, I brought home $3,000 a month. As the main breadwinner in my family now, my insurance for my family is going up $122.69 a month from $300 to $422 for the local plan. That is a 40% increase. When I had to get insurance last year, when my husband lost his job, I couldn't afford the other two plans because their premiums were $788 and $1,060. I definitely cannot afford the premiums of $1,114.94 for this year's. So to summarize, I'm getting less of a raise. My yearly premiums are being raised over $1,200. Without factoring in increases, in deductibles, co-pays, out-of-pocket max, my 4.3 pay increase is actually 1.8 before taxes. After taxes, and if I have a bad health year, I will be getting a pay cut. I don't think this is a good way to retain teachers. In four years, you will be losing me as I retire because I have no desire to continually beg and fight for a raise.
Jennifer Erickson, 5220 Cypress Creek Drive, Orlando, 32811. I just completed year 23 of teaching, 19 here with OCPS. I love teaching, and I would never want to do anything else. I'm proud to be a member of our OCPS Outstanding Performing Arts faculty, and I don't think I have to tell anyone in the room how many extra hours our music teachers put in. Members of this board have made statements about how important we teachers are, how much we give, how we deserve to be paid what we are worth. But I believe that you are about to vote in favor of a plan that, no matter how you word it, is a net pay cut for OCPS teachers. The drastic increase in all aspects of insurance costs will cancel out the heavily taxed bonus money and fraction of a cost-of-living increase before we even see a doctor. Using the insurance will put us even further in the hole with increased co-pays, deductibles, and prescription costs. Recent communications have encouraged teachers to take the cheapest option. My three children and I are already on that option, and I did the math. We are looking at medical costs that cancel out my bonus and cost-of-living increase before anyone in my family even gets sick. By saying yes to this contract, you are voting to give us a burden I don't believe any of you would want for yourselves or your families. You're saying to us, "We know you deserve better, but sorry..." You're saying to us, "We know you deserve better, but sorry, we can't give it to you." You've responded to our emails with statements that it's just not possible to do better than this deal equating to a net pay cut. I have read your responses, and I'm well aware it is not a simple thing we are asking. However, as teachers, we have been told many times before to do more with less, and we are expected to make it happen. We urge you to put the money where you say your hearts are and make it happen for us. We urge you to vote no, as you see this whole room filled with red, as OCPS teachers have come together in the past short few days like never before, and we are united to vote no.
My name is Mary May, 4833 Cypress Woods Drive, Orlando, 32811. I'm also, I've been asked by Lauren Font to say that she also would like to speak tonight, but she can't because she is at her second job. I've been teaching for 26 years, and I absolutely love it. I've started out in Dade County, where my father was a principal, my mom was a teacher, my sister is still a teacher, teaching high school. I then went to Osceola County and loved Osceola County and met many, many wonderful teachers there. In fact, one of them who then come to OCPS, and I followed her. I've been with OCPS now for 10 years and with another four years in Palm Beach County, and by far, this is the most difficult county to work with. We are constantly asked to do more with less, as everybody else has stated. In fact, when I moved up here, I only came back up here from Palm Beach County because I wanted to try something different. Because after 19 years of teaching, I was unable to still purchase my own home, and yes, I am single. On a teacher's salary, even in Palm Beach, I was unable to do that. If I were in Palm Beach now, I would be able to purchase my own home. I moved back up here to take a job selling timeshare, something completely off, out of my frame of reference, and I turned out to be pretty darn good at it. So good, in fact, that within eight months, I was able to purchase a home of 2,000, oh, 2,000, $250,000. That is not possible on a teacher's salary, and that was done within eight months. Now, I have to say that after that, we lost, we had a recession, and I went right back to looking for a teaching position. Because when I was let go from my job at Westgate, I was making $475 a day, whether I worked or not. Because I was not licensed as a Realtor, he let me go, and I immediately fell back to my teaching position. When I got my teaching position, I no longer qualified for the HARP loan, and I was unable to keep my home because, according to them, I only needed $75 change in what my mortgage was. I spent the next seven years fighting to save my home that I put everything that I had into. Friends of mine bought homes right next door to me and put nothing down. I put $50,000 down on my home. I built it from the ground up, and I lost it and had nothing to show for it. I now live in an apartment that I have to share with somebody else who also works for OCPS, and the cost of my rent, I am incredibly lucky to have wonderful landlords who understand the value of teaching, who have teachers in their family, and choose to charge me half of what they could be getting from somebody else. My roommate is moving to Korea to teach English in Korea because she'll be making more money there than she is here. We are losing new teachers by the thousands. It used to be that if you made it through Year 5, you were going to go, but now it looks like they don't even expect us to make it to Year 5. We cannot live on what you are paying us.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Torrance, and I'm a parent here in Orange County. I live at 11316 Ashboro Drive, Orlando, 32837. And it seems that all of these teachers have given up some part of their summer tonight to come and tell you how, how much struggle they're going through. And as a parent in this county with my child in their classrooms, I don't want this. We need to find a better way. And as a parent who stands on the outside and watches what happens at OCPS, I'm concerned when it's an adversarial relationship between the people out here in the audience who make this happen every day and the people who sit up here every month. So I'm going to ask that the group of people who have been elected up here by the parents and the teachers and everybody else in Orange County, maybe just start saying yes more. I don't understand why it's an argument at the negotiating table. Why don't you walk in and say, "Show me what you want. I'm going to give it to you." Why isn't that happening for these people out here? So I can give you the numbers. I can tell you, which you may or may not know, that the average rent in Orlando is $1,400, and that the pay for a teacher would be about $3,200, which makes rent 50% of their, their amount of money in their pocket every month. What we know as people who own homes and rent, and anyone out here knows and everyone up here knows, you shouldn't be paying more than a third, and that's considerably more. And so that's not even taking into account how large of a space they have to rent with their children. So many of our teachers are moms. We know this. It's women. And how many women have to rely on their partner to help them just so that they can live? And how many women stay in those bad relationships because they can't make it out? I volunteer to domestic violence law firm every day, and I have to hear about the women who can't leave because they can't afford the rent, and our teachers are these same people. And I look at the numbers, and it says the employee and children category is only 14% of all enrollment. That's because your teachers can afford to have their children on Florida Kid Care. They don't have to be with your insurance because the state will give them supplemental insurance. They'll give them welfare. I don't want that for my child's teacher. I don't want that in my neighborhood. I want my teachers to live like queens and kings. So I would rather that adversarial conversations stop and that the Board come and say, "Show me we can do it," and we're going to say yes. We're not going to say no. And if it fails, it fails. Then whose fault is it? These wonderful people who did the best they could. But right now, it's failing, and it's on you. And it's on anyone who votes for it. Thank you. I hope you guys reconsider tonight. Have a great night.
Thank you. All right. Next set of speakers, Diana Moore, Jessica Moore, Fred Short.
Are you next? A promise made, a promise kept. I'm here as a 34-year veteran of the teaching profession, and I'm a product of Orange County schools. I'm here to ask you to send this back to the table because I think there's a disconnect between the people who are bargaining for this group of people and the people who are doing the bargaining. There wasn't a survey, and I believe a survey, to find out where the priorities are in our group of teachers would be very helpful when you walk into bargaining. And I'm hearing that the offer that was put on the table was the same dollar amount package, they call it, as last year. So I don't know if there's a disconnect between your team and the School Board sitting up here. And I say that because I watch the School Board meetings, and I've heard you say, Chairman Jacobs, "I am so glad to hear that we are all on the same page, that compensation of our employees is a priority." You all said that. But as somebody said prior to that, it doesn't look that way. Last year, the state funded 47 cents extra for the FTE. Several of your emails back to the people in this room said it's the state's fault. Well, this year, it's $74 for the FTE. Okay, it's not great, but it's not 47 cents. And so we expected to see that the package that came to the table was more than the last year's package, $31.1 million, but it wasn't. And so I understand there's a problem with the insurance as well, and that is going to create a pay cut for many people. And I've heard you can't find a penny more. I'll come back to the insurance. But I looked into the financial reports, and Mr. Dale Kelly does a wonderful job as your Chief Financial Officer, and he writes up this wonderful, comprehensive annual financial report that's online. If you go look on Page 31 and 32, he summarizes your general fund, and he tells you how much money you have left over after you pay expenses. I wish my budget looked like this. Because after you brought in what was expected on the 1 mil, you had $15.8 million extra dollars because the property value has went up. 15.8. You had about $27 million rollover on the page with instruction. You budget high for instruction, you spend less, and that leaves a leftover amount. But at the bottom of the page, it's $27 million. And I have tracked because you do a 10-year average in that financial report. How much money you roll over every year, and I've watched it in the reports, it averages 42 million. And so I compliment Mr. Kelly on his budgeting ability. But I'm not sure that the people sitting up there are reading that report and reading that money. And so you've been putting it into your contingency fund, which is required to be 2%, that's the state law. You have made a policy it be 3%. The average county does 12%, but yours is 24%. And so I'm asking because Joe Biden basically said, "If you look at somebody's budget, you can see what they value." I'm asking you to fund what you value. Thank you very much.
Dr. Jenkins, we have two more speakers, but let me mention, just so that there's time, I did talk to Mr. Kelly today. And I know I talked to you about insurance. I asked Mr. Kelly, and I know it's not my place to direct him, but I did ask him to consider being prepared to answer some of these questions. And I don't think that was his plan, but I am not saying he doesn't have the answers. I think we just have a different approach towards, I think it's important with this many people in the audience, for us to answer some of these questions. And I've been given those answers, but they're not. So I'm hoping, I know he knows this information. He showed me some charts today. Either the information he's giving us is accurate, and we should be able to share it with, with our teachers, or, and I believe it is, but I just, I think that they deserve to know the why behind the 4%. So if you can have a minute while we're taking these next two, just to be, to prepare him for that, it would be helpful. Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, welcome.
Hi there.
Let me check, just one second. So I think that I have Jessica Moore-
Correct.
-and Fred Short. Did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody? I did this once, and I can't come back and correct it, so, okay, good. Because I have a couple of cards. I think we got to all of them, but I just don't want anybody to walk out without their voice being heard. Did I miss somebody?
You missed one.
Oh, okay. All right. No, I had two cards here, and I think I just didn't turn them in time. Welcome, Ms., I am guessing you're Ms. Moore also. Welcome, Ms. Moore.
Jessica Moore, 9169 North Bay Boulevard in Orlando at 32819. Distinguished teachers, members of our Board, also our wonderful community members that have come here to represent us and support us. We're very grateful. What I'm about to read is basically a stream of consciousness that I had this afternoon on our wonderful Facebook page that has united all of us. But in doing that, it has also put a huge burden on all of us. As we are natural empathies, we feel for one another. There was a gentleman up here who needed a pair of glasses earlier, and we are quick to offer our services in selfless acts without even hesitating. So if you will indulge me, I know you've been made aware of our page. We're so grateful. Here we go. I feel so stupid reading all of these highly insightful posts about the budget, bargaining, insurance, historic accounts of salary, et cetera. Stupid because instead of looking out for myself or looking into who was looking out for me, I spent my non-contract time looking out for my students, compiling engaging lessons for them, responding to parent emails, researching best practices, et cetera, times 100, when I should be able to trust with wholehearted abandon the people looking out for me because my job is actually priceless. Not only do I educate children, I love them and keep them safe every day. I am there doing all the things people in power simply talk about. Yet here I am, and here we all are, during our summer respite, having to advocate for ourselves. Why are teachers always on an island? Classroom teachers are some of the most academically accomplished and competent people I know who apparently have great handwriting. Why are other industries with less qualified citizens of our country making more money than teachers? Why am I having to be my own public speaker, my own mediator, my own accountant, my own insurance professional, and gosh darn it, my own lobbyist now? Why am I having to do the jobs other people are getting paid for? I am a teacher. Hashtag I am a teacher too.
Fred Short, and we have Nicholas Anderson, Matthew Mazel, I believe it is, and Wendy Dormel. Welcome, Mr. Short.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the whole Board, as well as Dr. Jenkins, who I guess slipped away for a moment. My name's Fred Short, 1412 West Brookshire Court, Winter Park, Florida, 32792. And it's my pleasure to be, have the opportunity to speak before you today. I cannot improve on what my colleagues have said about the status of teachers, about the difficulty we have in meeting our financial obligations, and overreliance of our love for students and our craft to fill in the gaps that only a pay raise can fill. So I can't speak to that. I would like to thank the Board for their time, but let me get more to maybe a possible solution, possible way out, possible place you may look to bring us together because the parent who spoke so eloquently earlier did an outstanding job of communicating a parent's perspective and identifying that if we have a bad relationship between management and between the teachers, your foot soldiers in the fields, then it cannot help children. There's no way that can come out good for them, or as good as it should be, because they deserve our best. And another time, I would love to come before this Board or speak to you individually about an idea, it's not a great idea, but it's an idea that would solve so many of our student achievement problems, so many of them. And it's ubiquitous, and it would not cost much money. That's another time I look forward to maybe speaking to you about that. However, there are a couple of things that were alluded to earlier. One thing, you do have a problem of optics, I think, a little bit. Because if someone were to, I've heard this, I've not confirmed it, so I'll just be honest about that. If somebody were to compare our School Board salary with other school boards in Florida, then it would fall much higher than our teacher pay ranking in Orange County. If that's not accurate, then I'd be happy to be corrected with the data. We have a superintendent very high at the top of the pay scale, nowhere near where our teachers are. So that's a problem of optics, first of all, I think, perhaps. The second thing is that a decision was made in benefits to pass on catastrophic damage insurance coverage. Now, that was a decision made. Now, I can't help wonder if the money savings from buying that insurance is not, are now costing teachers in the form of inadequate raise. There's another area you should look at, it was alluded to by Ms. Moore, I believe. 10 years ago, when the same topic was up, we had a meeting, and we realized that the Board was considering extra surplus funds every year, that they had every year. It was about $34 million a year, and they were saying that that can't be touched. Well, now that averages about $42, $44 million a year. If it's every year, it's recurring. And it is something you could pass a motion tonight to change that School Board policy and allow some of that money that comes in every year to go towards these teachers. And there's other sources, too, I don't have time to go into right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Short. That's another one of those, Dr. Jenkins. I totally understand how that looks to people, that it appears like it's recurring, but I hope that Mr. Kelly can find a way of explaining that because it doesn't, it just, it just doesn't work. Welcome, sir.
My name is Nicholas Anderson. I live at 10846 Waterford Court, Orlando, Florida, 32821. I was a member of the bargaining unit for CTA who negotiated this deal, and I signed this deal. And I want to, I wrote a speech, but I can't read it because most of the concerns in it were already voiced by the- it were already voiced by the people speaking against it. Because we brought all of these concerns to the district at every meeting for months. I believe Ms. Gallagher was there when I myself spoke specifically to saying that we would be passing a pay cut for people whose spouses and children and families were on here. This was stated repeatedly by the bargaining team. And we were told, the majority of the people in OCPS only insure themselves, and so this deal won't be a pay cut for most people. And when we spent four months, five months, looking through the district's books, looking for money anywhere we could find it to demand more, the only place we could find it was the one place we were told we couldn't touch. And so based on that, in the meanwhile, we won serious concessions on pre-planning. We won serious concessions on the school psychologists, in addition to other things that we have won for our teachers in protecting them against lesson plan templates, the CRMs, the DPALC across the board. And that pre-planning language is now some of the strongest in our district or in the state. And we were told that if we did not accept this deal, that was off the table in the future. And we had to decide, are we going to risk going to impasse, which has not been successful for us? Or are we going to take a deal which will not be a pay cut for 70% of the teachers, but will be for 30%? And we knew it, but we were told we couldn't get any more money. And we were told that these concessions that we won from the district would be taken out. And so we agreed to the deal, because we did not think we could get a better deal, because other districts, when they have gone to impasse, and when we have gone to impasse in the past, we have lost. And so we did the hard choice that we did to make sure that the majority of our teachers could be defended, because that pre-planning language is some of the best in the state of Florida. But I will say this, a lot of the questions that were asked tonight, we asked hard, and we did not like the answers we got, but we could not avoid the financial realities of what we heard. So I will say this to the board, if you vote no, and send us back to the bargaining table next week, but we don't have any money attached, the deal isn't going to look any different for insurance, because we have an $18 million hole to fill. And if you're not going to fill that out of the reserves, I don't understand what the deal is. And so I just want to make it clear, if we're voting no on this, and I have to go back to the bargaining table with the team in CTA, and get these questions asked, because all of the concerns here, we said it repeatedly, and sometimes those meetings got very heated and very testy about it, we voiced it. But if you're not giving us extra money back when we go back, then this deal's just coming right back around, except it might have some of those concessions we won on working conditions out of it.
All right, thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Matthew Hazel, 10108 Matchlock Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32821. So just to give some context, I'm also on the bargaining team, I also sat at the table and signed. Our initial ask was a 10% across-the-board raise, which still isn't as much as you deserve, and is actually literally illegal. They can't give percent raises, it has to be dollar amounts, that's statute. But here are the facts on the ground. Seminole, Pasco, Osceola, Volusia, they all got smaller raises than we did, and they pay way more in insurance, some of them up to hundreds of dollars every paycheck. I'll save the rotten fruit for the end, please. Brevard fought.
Folks, you all have done a really good job, and I know you're not liking me either right this minute, but we still need to maintain decorum, so everybody can be heard. Thank you.
Brevard fought. Brevard went to impasse. Brevard won at impasse. The special magistrate for Brevard said, the district had the money, and the district could reach into the reserve, and the district could pay the teachers more. And the number the magistrate said was still less than we got, and you know what happened yesterday? The school board voted that down, and went with the superintendent's initial thing. They wanted impasse, and they still lost. We knew these things, sitting at the table. We feel the weight of these decisions. We feel, all 14,000-plus of you, and your needs, and your families. I have a mortgage I can barely pay too, and a $25,000 roof replacement I can't afford, and a bucket in my garage to catch drips that's been there for a while. I know. But sometimes all your choices are bad choices. Sometimes you have to choose the least worst option. We heard you, and we defended you. Last time we went to impasse, we didn't win, and we lost steps. That's where your step raises went, we lost them at impasse. That's a risk we take if we go there. We did what we felt we had to do to protect you and to protect our contract, and we signed. I'm sorry, it's not what you deserve. But there is one thing we didn't know, and that's this. We didn't know you could get this involved. We didn't know you could speak this loud. We didn't know. So this is what I say to you, we need this from you. We need this from you every day. Almost every school in this district has open AR positions. Almost every CTA committee has open seats. Our marches have extra signs, and every event we hold has empty chairs. We are only 54% union in OCPS, we're barely half. If we were 75%, that bargaining table would have looked different. If we were this full at every single school board meeting, if we were this big when we marched on City Hall, this might look different. So don't take this as a one-and-done. I am happy to see you stay involved and stay loud. Thank you.
All right. Wendy Dormall, 1020 Webster Avenue. Good afternoon. Everything has been said, you are worth more. On behalf of CTA, I thank every teacher, parent, and community member who stands with us as we advocate for higher wages and improved working conditions. We thank everyone who attended rallies, summits, school board meetings, signed petitions, made petitions, and wrote to the school board members throughout the year to get the message out. We are worth more. We all agree that Orange County educators deserve higher salaries, and better benefits, and working conditions. We cannot recruit and retain quality teachers without them. We must not allow permanent subs to replace teachers in our classrooms. Our students deserve more. The future of Florida begins in the classroom. We live in a state where teacher salaries rank 46th in the nation. We live in a district where the average salary falls below all the five largest districts in the state. A substantial raise is needed so we can get lifted from the bottom to the top. CTA said this over and over publicly and at the bargaining table, and I want to thank you, Angie, for coming to the last bargaining session. Considering the decades of underfunding public education, we know realistically, this can't happen in an instance. It can't happen with the funding we have from Tallahassee, but it must happen. The CTA bargaining team members worked hard during this last year to negotiate salaries, benefits, and working conditions. We are proud of victories concerning settlement agreements and other contract gains. CTA extensively analyzed budget documents to determine where we could locate more money to increase the salary proposal. The only line of funding with excess reoccurring expenses, I'm sorry, with excess money that we could identify is the reserves account, which due to policy cannot be used for reoccurring expenses such as salaries. At the CBLT Budget Committee meeting, CTA formally requested that the school board consider changing the policy to allow reserves to be used for salaries. We ask for your consideration again. We ask for transparency. An increase to insurance costs is a pay cut. I've said it's a pay cut. So CTA, knowing that we had an $18 million deficit, knowing that we had asked for the reserves to be tapped, I was told that in 2010 that did happen. Knowing that that would not happen, what we did was we lowered and negotiated lowering some deductibles in Plan A, so that this plan, oh darn, with the most members, would be the least impacted. But, okay, can I finish?
Finish, sense.
Thank you. So we were told emphatically there was no more money. And you heard what everyone here has said, and that's the reality of it. So we signed off on this, believing that we could not get a better deal, that other districts' raises were lower, other districts' insurance were higher. We did our research, we found out. We also considered that our OCPS sister union accepted the same 4% salary and benefits package before we settled.
Ms. Dormall, time is up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I thought you had another sentence, I was wanting to let you finish, as I let Coach Nolan finish considerably overtime. So here, speaker cards. We speak with speaker cards. I'm sorry, did you already speak? Okay, I apologize, there's one shot at this. Everybody gets three minutes. Those are the rules, we apply them consistently and fairly. Okay. We've heard all the public testimony. Member Castor Dental, he wanted to be recognized. Actually, thank you, why don't we hear from, I apologize, let's go to the superintendent. I think, I'm hoping you can find a way, but I think the reserve issue is obviously something that definitely needs to be dealt with, but I'll turn it over to you for any comments that you can make to help clarify some of these issues.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, certainly appreciate all of the teachers that have spoken tonight, and those who have turned out as well. Let me make a couple of comments and some clarifications as well, and then we'll have Dale Kelly, our Chief Financial Officer, come and make some comments. First, I think it is important to note, while information that sometimes comes down from Tallahassee sounds like we got much more, the truth is, some of those dollars were categorical. I want to mention specifically, best and brightest dollars were dropped into the FTE formula, and they are not included in your raises, by the way. One of the board members said, please make sure you understand, whenever they finish the details around best and brightest, that is in addition to your raises. But that sort of muddies the water, you don't have clear indication of raises when other things are dumped in that are categorical. We shared lots of information through a couple of news you can use, and I want to compliment also CTA, because their website had a Frequently Asked Questions document there that was accurate as well for your use. Couple of things I think we probably should have highlighted more strongly for everyone's understanding. One was the best and brightest. The other is that when people say, how come you got more money, and it didn't go into a larger raise compared to last year, the biggest number that is different than last year is $17 million that had to be paid for the 10% increase in insurance premiums for our employees. So $17 million that had to pay for that deficit in our insurance program actually had to be spent on that rather than raises. I certainly regret that we didn't make that a larger point earlier for everyone's understanding. I want to share a couple of other tidbits about the benefits program, because we've had a lot of information that's somewhat erroneous, and so if you'll bring up that slide in the back, I had a couple of slides just to clarify, so everyone understands what our insurance program is. We're actually under an employee benefits trust. That means we are self-insured, that means we hold money for our own insurance program, and then have a third party actually provide administration for those dollars. If you had to go out and have an actual insurance company take on your plan, it would cost us more money. We think the board is very frugal in making sure that we are self-insured. So consider pot of money, self-insured, it is actually managed by a trustee group that meets on a quarterly basis to supervise those funds. Both unions are invited to those meetings, so they can hear what's going on as well. Cigna is not your insurance company, they are actually the management services for our medical coverage. And so they are not the reason behind any of our increases. Gallagher is the consulting company that looks at your plan design, and the projected cost, and tries to help us right-size your insurance program. And then, of course, the Fringe Benefits Committee has members from CTA, OESPA, and the district, they look at those plan changes and recommendations as well before they ever move forward. And here's the thing, I believe when Gallagher and others looked at our plan, they realized if you've got an $11 million deficit, as of last quarter, you've got to make it until September, that deficit is actually going to be larger. If you fail to manage your self-insured program, the state will say to you, then you need to go and get an outside party to provide your insurance. And so we're very careful about those balances. $11 million deficit this year means it's going to be additional by the time we get to September. So there had to be some additional premiums and some plan adjustments. Again, by contract, the board agreed, let me back up for a second, so the CTA contract says the board shall pay the first 8% of the actual increase in premium cost. OESPA contract actually got out of sync, and it still says the first 10%. And so the board agreed, the first 10% they are responsible for. Went from 8,400 for each employee to 9,200 for each employee. Just so you understand, that's about a 95% of what the board actually covers for employees compared to an 82% national average. And I love my fellow superintendents in surrounding districts, but I have to tell you, when we look at the numbers, our plan is better than our surrounding districts, and our raise is better as well. So the increased cost, $17 million in the general fund, it's a recurring dollars, dollars that could have been available for pay raises. That $11 million deficit that will grow, benefits in general are recurring costs as well. So in a non-recurring pot of money, if you use that to pay your recurring cost, then pretty soon you go broke. A neighboring district use some non-recurring, and that's why the board has policy, a neighboring district use non-recurring dollars to try to pay for recurring costs, they are evaporated pretty swiftly. So it's a good business practice not to try to pay for recurring out of non-recurring. As I mentioned before, both unions approved the adjusted plan, employees have always had to cover the increase for any family. If the board said, you know what, that 10% that we pay for employees, we'd like to cover it for families as well that simply could not be afforded in that plan. And so it's always been the case that families have to cover those increases. What I wish were the case is that we had significant additional dollars from the state, and that we had insurance and healthcare costs that were either stable or going lower. Fortunate truth about healthcare in this country is that the cost of healthcare continues to rise, and we don't see any change in the near future. And so the proposal, I assure you that the board put forth and asked the bargaining team to take on their behalf to the table, was authentic. I want to also commend those who served on the bargaining team, I know it's not easy. I want to commend both the CTA side and the administrative side, because I know it's not easy. The process is supposed to conclude when that recognized agency takes care of a tentative agreement, then 14,000 teachers have an opportunity to weigh in individually, to vote it up or vote it down. That is a recognized bargaining agent, rather than petitions or speakers, legally, there is a recognized bargaining agent. And then the 14,000 teachers have an opportunity to weigh in individually on their preference for their plan. I've asked Dale Kelly to talk a little bit more about the fund balance. I will tell you upfront, as he's coming to the podium, I will tell you upfront, when you hear people talking about a very large fund balance, if they say 22%, 20% or more, that usually is a fund balance that is much larger than what our reserves are. So if you wipe back in every school's budget at the end of the year, if you didn't spend it, you lose it, if you brought all of that money back in, you would have a much more inflated fund balance. When we talk about our reserve, we're talking about a specific portion that is unallocated. Years ago, and I've shared this with board members, years ago, there was a practice that at the end of the year, schools, somebody's nodding their head, been around a long time, you remember, everybody's money from the school level was wiped back into a district pot. That is not the case anymore. If schools save money, if they don't spend all of their money, their fund balances are considered still theirs, they carry over from year to year. We thought it was an unwise business practice, certainly for schools that think they need to hurry and spend the rest of their money before the end of the school year, because they're going to lose it. And so for years, we have not done that wiping back in, swiping in, all of the fund balance from the school. So when you hear people talk about an inflated number for a fund balance, that includes not only a school level, but some other areas as well. Mr. Kelly, you want to talk further on the reserves?
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, just continuing on.
Yeah, just continuing on those, on those, that same train of thought, yes, our unassigned fund balance, that's the accounting term is used for it. Those are the dollars that we have within our reserves that have no obligations against them that are available. And as was mentioned, yeah, we do have a board policy. Your board policy indicates that needs to be a minimum of 3%. And I can tell you, as of June 30th, 2018, that was our last fiscal year that closed. We had $72 million there, and that was representative of 4.3% of revenues. Also, just to be clear on fund balance, it is a non-recurring source. You use that once, and it's gone. It doesn't replenish. If you don't use it, it shows up there each year because you didn't spend it. But if you spend it, it's gone. There are things that can impact your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance. You know, if revenues are unexpected, non-recurring revenues come in, that can impact your fund balance, or expenses are high. There are things that happen every year. I mean, as you monitor your revenues, you monitor your expenditures, things will adjust each year. Your utilities bill could be up, you know, you have a warm summer, dollars are up, so you could actually be over budget in utilities, or it could be the other way around, but there's things that can impact that. A few other things I wanted to mention for the coming, this coming year budget, we're projected to grow by 3,764 students. So, we have to have dollars set aside in the budget to teach those students and provide the other services we do provide. So, that will take roughly 27.8 million of the dollars that are budgeted for those additional students. It was also talked about the base student allocation. That was, the actual base student allocation is $75.07 increase. That's a 1.79% increase on a per-student basis. So, that's how that equates. Yeah, last year, it was very, very small, 47 cents. That was accurate. It has gone up to 75.07, but that still only represents 1.79%. And just to reiterate what the superintendent said, she was, yeah, a big difference from last year to this year is the health insurance and the additional dollars that need to be contributed to that. Couple of other things I'll mention is, it was mentioned too, categoricals. Yes, there were some significant categorical increases this year, particularly the best and brightest. That was 21.3 million. That is not included in helping to fund the offers that were put on the table and agreed to, or it's not available. It's really dictated by the state how those dollars are used, not by the local school board. There were some other increases in both safe schools, a new categorical turnaround schools, as well as there was an increase in the FRS rates that we're all required who participate in the FRS to fund. The health insurance increase, like the superintendent said, it's currently in a deficit through March of 11 million. Last year, we didn't have to adjust anything because there was enough of the reserves within that employee benefit trust to handle it, but actually, the prior year, we lost another 8.7 million. This year, we lost another 11 million, so the change has to be made to right the ship as far as the employee benefit trust. When you look at the overall state budget, just to give you a few of the numbers, when you look at the overall per-student allocation, if you look at all the money, including all those categoricals, including best and brightest, it was like a 3.87% increase in total dollars. But those certain categoricals, like I mentioned, you cannot use them, such as best and brightest. That was the largest one. Same way with safe schools and those others. So, if you take those significant increase in categoricals out, our per-student increase was 2.17%. It was also mentioned tonight about, yeah, but you have the special millage. We consider that in the budget. We had the special millage last year, we got it this year. So, when you add the special millage on top of the dollars that come through the FEFP, our increase is not 2.17 in total, it goes up to 2.45. But you gotta remember that the special millage really only represents about 8% of our revenues. While it seems like a large amount, we are very thankful for the citizens who've supported that. It does not, we are a large organization, a billion eight in appropriations. So, the actual special millage, I think, brought in $126 million last year, and this year, it will bring in more, and that's already been factored into the 2.45% increase per Lastly, I just wanted to mention, some of these, some of the arguments that are made have probably been very good. Maybe they need to be made to the legislature because if you look at our per-student funding and you look at where we are now versus where we are prior to the Great Recession, even with the special millage, on top of what we get in the FEFP dollars, we're $660 less per student than we were back in July 2007 when you consider inflation. Inflation has been relatively moderate. Over that period of time, the average inflation has been less than 2% when you look at the CPI. So, still, we're $660 less per student when you look at the overall funding, and that's comparing the report that was just provided, the conference report that came out of the legislature, back to the second calculations, all the way back to July 2007 prior to the Great Recession.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I'm sorry, I was going to mention one more thing, if I might, Madam Chair.
Of course.
I want to make one more comment about fund balance and reserves. Essentially, we use those dollars for non-recurring costs such as the bonus, and I want certainly this board to know and this audience to know that we are always watching our fund balance. In years past, we have negotiated, I can't negotiate across the table to you and tell you I'm going to do something in January. In years past, we have negotiated with our bargaining team because bargaining does not end at the conclusion of one contract. Bargaining is year-round, and as those dollars are watched and watched over and as the dust settles, we have in years past and probably will have another consideration, but it is a collective bargaining issue with our recognized representatives of our teachers and of our classified personnel. We've looked at those dollars and added additional bonuses to our employees because we can take it out of non-recurring, but it is still collectively bargained and has to be signed off on as well. I can assure you, that fund balance, while if you look at the graphs, it has gone down significantly over the last several years. We are always watching it and considering bringing to the board and to the bargaining table any additional compensation we might be able to provide to our teachers and employees. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize one of the members, but just want, because it's a lot of information. And I know you all know, Diana mentioned it, this board made it clear what our priorities were. We meant that. We all meant that, and we are advocating for funding. We're advocating for more funding from the state. But we've thrown out so much stuff. Quick question, show of hands, how many people feel like they understand the reserve and the fund balance issue that we just talked about, that understand it? That's what I thought. So, the majority do not.
I understand the deficit.
How many understand the deficit for the insurance? Okay, more, more? Yeah, but more people understand that. I think that we've got some work to do to understand what a reserve means and a fund balance. Let's go to Member Kestrel Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the teachers who are here tonight. I see a lot of my former colleagues in the room, and I thank you for coming out tonight. And I know there are more who are watching it live stream, and I thank you for taking the time out for doing that. I want to thank all the teachers who reached out to us, the board members with your emails. I feel badly that I didn't get a chance to respond to each one, but they were coming every five minutes, it seemed, and I wasn't able to give you a response because I wasn't sure what my response should be. So, I do want to let you know that your reactions to the salary package and how you and your families will be affected personally really made an impact. You truly helped me to grasp the human effects of what we proposed on paper. The board received so many heartfelt and well-written emails, really laying out the proposed agreement will affect our teachers, both young and old, both experienced or just starting out, single parents, or those caring for aging parents, or a spouse with medical complications. We heard tonight how much you love your jobs and your commitment to your students. We heard your frustration at having to work a second job just to make ends meet and at the expense of time with your own children and families. Many of you told us that this agreement is not going to work, that after factoring in health costs, you'll be making less this year than last year, that you'll be forced to leave a job that you love. And I'm sorry that there is so much struggle in just being a teacher. I am sick to hear how much personal sacrifice is necessary due to the increasingly unrealistic workload and our inability to keep up with the rising cost of living. And as a teacher myself and one of your biggest advocates, I have been forced to reflect on my role in this process and my responsibility for what is on the table. Every opportunity I have with elected officials throughout the state and with state agency leaders, I ask for and make the case for more money for our teacher salaries, and my colleagues will attest to that. They're with me, and they make the same case. District staff and the superintendent can attest that I discuss the enormous teacher workload at almost every meeting I have with them. I think in this process, I made assumptions that the process would reflect our priorities, and I apologize for not asking more questions and for not getting more answers before the negotiations. I know that in our budget committee meetings, Wendy Dormall repeatedly asked for more information about reserve accounts and called off negotiations when it wasn't forthcoming, and I should have done more to help. So, what are our options as a board? Staff has told us that if the board votes to not accept the tentative agreement, we could face possible unfair labor practices, complaints, and it could be tied up for a while and without a guaranteed favorable outcome. Or, as a board, we could acknowledge that we have a chance to do a better job. I don't believe our hands are tied since the agreement has to make a stop before the board, before it goes to the teachers for a vote. This is part of the bargaining process. We have a budget work session coming up on Thursday, and I know we will ask more pointed questions based on the information and real-life examples the teachers have brought to us. I know that I want to better understand the salary increase ratios. The increase ratios are not allowed to exceed 50%, but what percentage should we offer? As for higher health costs, can the employee benefits trust deficit of $11 million be offset with our reserve funds so that the 18% in premiums for employees isn't necessary? Bonus of $500 should not be characterized as an offset of increased health costs for some when every penny of that bonus is used to offset the cost of food and mortgages and the high cost of rent. I cannot say that the agreement we have now, which was put together in good faith, is what serves our teachers and our students best. Even though we achieve a competitive advantage over our neighboring counties, which are much smaller, we aren't competing with Seminole or Osceola for teaching positions. We are competing with all the other jobs that pay more than teaching. If we want to keep our teachers, instead of spending even more to recruit new ones or wasting students' times with unprepared substitutes, then we must do better. It is now coming before the board for our approval. If our hands were tied, we wouldn't be able to have this vote. It might muddy up the process, but I believe we will get a better outcome. Tonight, we are also to vote on school-based administrators and district administrator salary increases, and I would like to recommend we wait on approval of raises until we find more for our teachers. So, members and Madam Chair, although this agreement was bargained in good faith, I would like to put forth a motion to reject this tentative agreement. Send it back to bargaining with a clear direction to do better by all of our teachers. Thank you.
We have a motion by Member Kestrel Dental. We have a second by, I got that, Member Lopez. Pardon me? Yes, we can hear from Woody, and then we have a number of, before we take a motion, we're going to have a discussion. I'm sure we all have a lot of questions. So, let me begin with, I had two people want to ask a legal question. Go ahead, Member Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to ask a legal question. We have executive sessions in which all of this comes before the board, and every board member that sits in this seat have a right to speak. My heart is with all that the bargaining team had to go through. If you've never sat on a team or yet go to the bargaining session, I've served on Orange County bargaining team for many years. I taught in Orange County for 25 and building rep and was first vice president and soon to be president of CTA. I also served on Osceola bargaining team. We have what we call a right-to-work state. We have a collaborative process. I am not going to sit here when my colleagues and I sit in executive session, just like Wendy Dormall and her team has to sit in executive session. We send information down to the superintendent and her bargaining team, which is our voice, and we say what we want in executive session, and then we're going to come to the board table and ask differently. With what's going on, I need to really find out what's happening here because I am a teacher, and I think I have a little more years than most people sitting there, maybe except Coach Nolan. I think I got you beat. I think I have you beat, Coach Nolan, but it's okay. I love what I do, and that's why I do it. I am a, I know you do. That's why you're here. I am a teacher. There are many teachers on this board. What I have got to see is, I'm not going to sit here as a constitutional officer. I serve as my building rep. I've always been building rep everywhere for over 50 years, even when I taught at Bonswilson High in Charleston, South Carolina, my first year. That was my first year, 1967, so do the numbers, math teachers, and it'll tell you, okay? So, what I'm trying to tell you, you can thumbs up, thumb down, sir, all you need to. I'm going to say what I have to say. There is a process. I'm not, if the bargaining team brings us something and we want to skirt it, and this boy wants to skirt it, that's their way of doing it, but it's not going to solve it. You have a right-to-work state. The only voice that you really have is your CTA. That's why you pay your membership. I've been a member since 1963, okay? Because we had to become a member in high school, and we went to the National Education Association meeting, and those that went with me knew that we knew everybody there because we all worked together. So, therefore, if this comes across, I could not support this vote without hearing more. I heard from you, but I have not heard from the others. I asked tonight, how many are from District 5? I think I saw three. District 5 is my district, okay? I'd like to hear from my district. I'd like to hear from one, two, I heard from a few from one, a few from seven, and I heard from those of you tonight. Some of you did not even know, and I'm just, and don't get angry because we don't expect you to because I know what you're going through. I am Marzano. You're talking about you're a teacher. We're not. We are Marzanos. We're little robots for Marzano, and I know it better than you do. I have to do lesson plans just like you do. I get graded, effective, highly effective, just like you do. So, what I'm saying is, I am not going to sit here and go against a proposal that both bargaining teams agreed on until I hear more. So what I'm saying is, I am not going to sit here and go against a proposal that both bargaining teams agreed on until I hear more. Now that's me, and you could do you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Woody? I'm sorry, Dr. Reg, Mr. Regis?
Oh, my legal question.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm sorry. I got carried away. My legal question through, through our legal counsel is, what is the procedure? When you have a bargaining team working together, what is the process that we ought to follow? And would there be any violation of any kind if we put this proposal to a vote?
So, Dr. Gordon, members of the board, the options are the same as the ones I described in an email to you yesterday, which are, you, I've already voted for the OESPA contract. And that means that you have approved it with whatever impact they will have for their health insurance. That now will go, because you have ratified it, go essentially to the OESPA bargaining unit, not just the members of OESPA, and they will get a chance to vote up or down on that agreement. Any negotiations which overturn an agreement, a tentative agreement between the union and the representatives of management, which is who negotiated and brought this to the table here tonight, means that there has to be, according to the stat, according to the case law, and I don't want to misquote, some plausible rationale for a withdrawal, particularly when the withdrawal is on a number of contractual provisions. This is the case of Teamsters Local 769 versus City of Fort Pierce back in 2010. So in other words, there has to be more than just an explanation that you need more information or there has to be new facts. There has to be something substantially different. The reality is that the, you as a board will have to explain that on the record. If you fail to do so by rejecting the vote tonight, what you're setting up is the organization for a potential unfair labor practice. And that challenge can come from either the union, it can come from any member of the bargaining unit that is rejected because there are individuals within the organization that have employee-only coverage that may think that this is a great deal and they will have a right to challenge. But that's your right, that's your choice. And those were the, the options that were explained. Obviously, if you approve, what will happen is it will be turned over to the teachers' bargaining unit, all 14,000 plus that are members, and they will be able to chance to have a vote on this particular tentative agreement. If the support is as strong as it looks tonight and it carries through, the bargaining unit will come back and say, we reject. If the support is not there, it will get approved. And of course, as the superintendent mentioned, bargaining, like anything else, is an ongoing process. So I think, hopefully, that answers your question on the, on the impacts and the potential options.
Yes, General Counsel, it really did answer. I think you explained it well, and I think I could go back to reference Coach Nolan, what he said. I know he made certain statements, but you also cleared it up that just that OESPA is going to vote. OESPA did not decide that this is what we're accepting because OESPA can reject what is just was passed tonight. So the union can also reject what was passed, or they can also, they could vote it up or they could vote it down. Or if they, go ahead.
Just to clarify, and so folks understand why this is important. If management proposes, for example, a 4% raise, and the union agrees and they work through that process, and then the school board, playing a game, says, you know what? They're willing to take four, let's reject it, and then let's offer three and see if they're willing to take three. That's unfair. If you come back and they accept three because now they've come up with some excuse as why we have less money, and then management again, the school board or whoever says, no, we're going to reject that again, now we're going to offer you two until we figure out what's your breaking point, that is considered unfair labor practice. Similarly, if the union bargaining team decides to back out on a tentative agreement, they would be subject to an unfair labor practice. But as a collective bargaining unit, they only represent those folks and say, we're tentatively agreeing to this, subject to the approval by our bargaining unit, which is all teachers or all members of classified, et cetera. So that is really the power of the voice of the group and how they influence and make those decisions and can send something back to both the bargaining unit teams to be able to say, okay, this wasn't satisfactory to them.
So therefore, with, with all that said, I heard Matthew loud and clear, and I heard Nicholas Anderson loud and clear. And those who've never sat on a bargaining team, you really should go visit, you should be an AR rep, get active in something with your union because that's your only voice. But the biggest thing that, excuse me, excuse me, I respected you and I wrote down everything you said, and if I could go down, I can tell you everything you said. You could at least, as a teacher, give me the same respect that I gave you.
Thank you.
I'm not finished.
Oh, I know you're not. I'm thanking them for spitting it down.
I'm not. Make me lose my, I'm trying to get it clear. Then therefore, General Counsel, with this motion on the floor, what would that do to the board members that are sitting here that in executive session and other sessions and coming back with the superintendent letting us know that the OESPA and the CTA was going to bring this proposal to us? Because this is, I'm just hearing this for the first time tonight. Where would that put us? Because you mentioned about the unfair labor practice. Where would that put us?
It would not go to a vote of the teachers, for starters, because the union would have nothing to provide them as a vote.
So none of the teachers will be able to vote on their salary?
Not on this proposal.
So where would they go from there? They'll be getting the, I've been through this before, being on a bargaining team, where we didn't even get a raise. I've been on, in teaching, that we didn't even get a raise in different, in Orange or Osceola, and we taught on the same salary. So I'm trying, teachers, and thank God for the parents that came tonight, I'm trying to figure out where we are going when we vote. Because if it's going to mean a standstill and you work on the same salary, we've been there before. So I need to know that from the General Counsel. I love you all so much because you don't want your kids to talk, but you sure do talk. Mr. Counsel.
So again, with, without plausible rational basis for the rejection, there is the possibility of a ULP, an unfair labor practice. But outside of that, I would assume, because this is typically not chartered waters, typically at this point, you're putting it up for a vote and then figure out where the union, the bargaining unit ends up being. If the board decides to reject it tonight, I would assume you're back at the bargaining table, subject to, if the union does not want to bargain, and if it's been collaboratively bargained at this point, there really is not going to be much of a change, as you heard one of the speakers indicate who's part of the team.
And this will delay teachers that may want it, that may want that insurance or may not want it, that would delay them from voting. Other teachers that are not here, that would delay them from having a vote to either vote it up or vote it down. So taking away the, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, General Counsel.
Right now, the floor is yielded to Member Gould, who's been waiting in line.
Okay, I have some comments and thoughts, but before I get to that, I want to kind of continue the legal questions. So if this were to get delayed, I know we have some timeline issues with healthcare and what happens with the cycle in the, in the healthcare timeframes. Would there be risk of losing any options on the healthcare in any way?
So Board Member Gould, with all due respect, that's less of a legal question than more of a healthcare issue, so I'm going to defer that to Dr. Jenkins and our staff.
Two quick points. First, open enrollment is actually to take place this summer. Your policy year begins in October, so between now and September, decision selections have to be made on the insurance plan, open enrollment this summer.
So we'd have four weeks, one of which is a holiday. So that brings us to three weeks if there were a chance to, to, to bring this back. Or we'd be risking either people not knowing what plans they would be opting for because the ones that we have will be expiring.
Or they may be, the cost associated with them is going to be unknown.
Is going to be totally transferred over.
But we're not going to know because?
Because we won't know. So there's, there's a, there's a dangerous period in there, in the healthcare realm. And I don't normally direct this at you all, but I want you to, to make sure that you understand this. Do you understand the risk that you're running? No. No, because there's an increase. We can't stop the increase. So.
Yeah, so rather than a conversation.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
You can get a show of hands.
So by show of hands, could you tell me if you understand the risk to your healthcare coverage?
I'm not.
Okay.
Let me interrupt again because you can ask them that and they, they can think they understand. I think, to be clear about what the risk is. Dr. Jenkins, if we have not resolved this, right now, the proposal on the table includes additional costs for certain plans. If we do not resolve this before open enrollment, is it correct that employees will not know the cost of their plan? Dr. Jenkins, am I correct that employees will not know the cost of their plans because based on what's been?
It's in limbo.
It would be in limbo. So they would be picking a plan without knowing what the cost of that plan was. Because all of that is on the table if we're coming back.
So I, I just wanted to bring up that point. And, and the, the only reason that I even know anything about that is because I was part of healthcare administration for 20 years, and I know enough to be dangerous, but not enough to ever do anything with it. But I, I want to tell you, as difficult as tonight is, and especially, I think it's especially difficult for our new board members. My, my first board meeting, which we were reminiscing about earlier, was on the LGBT bathroom issue. That's how I remember it, and the equity issue. And that was a very tough, very first board meeting. This is an even harder one because we're dealing with lives. But when I look around the country and, and what has happened because teachers have coalesced and brought their voices forward, even when they have the support of your board, which you do, I want you to know this, we support you. We, we do support you. And it takes a lot of understanding of the financial components of this. But I, but I want to show you this. I have the budget here. This is a summary of the education budget, and I found money. I found a lot of money, actually. So for example, we have $158,299,45 going to charter schools for, for maintenance, repairs, and renovation. Zero to public schools. Zero. We have 284,500, 284 million, I'm sorry, I said that number wrong. I'm not the math teacher. 158,299,45. Didn't make sense, did it? 258 mil, 284 million, $500,000 that is in the best and brightest teacher that we would rather give you in your salaries because you are all highly effective teachers. Supplemental, oh, no, not that one. Sorry, that one's, that one's flat. Hurricane Michael relief, you know, that's a horrible thing. There's not a lot we can do about it, but it's $14 million out of the education budget. $14 million out of the education budget for hurricane relief. The strategic statewide initiatives, which is part of the Safe School Assessment. Last year, it was 973,000. This year, it's 5.99, $5,990,000. I could go on listing it, but I added it all up. And that's not the entire budget. That's just those components that I could find that I, oh, there is one that, oh, I talked about the charter school one, sorry, that, that I want to share. It came out to 513,786,000, almost even, that if we could get those kind of dollars. So I, I say this not as a scapegoat. That's not what this is about. This is not about being a scapegoat. But we need you with us in Tallahassee in community, in committee weeks. We need you in Tallahassee when we go to meet the legislatures. We need to go with you when you go up. We need the stories that were told, and I wrote a couple of you, about sharing that with your legislative groups. And you especially need to share that with the leadership up there. That's the Senate President, the, the Speaker of the House, your DOE Commissioner, and the Governor. We have got to be one voice in this. We have got to let them know that you are not paid at market value. We recognize that. We cannot risk the school district on the other side of that, though. I, I would love to find ways to offset the healthcare if we could, but I have to believe with the challenges from the union to us about our dollars, that we've overturned those stones. I have to have faith in that at some point. I have to, to move forward. But, but we have got to invest in our school systems. We have got to invest in our public education. This is our economic standpoint. I know you don't like, get when, I'm from the other world of industry, when, when I talk about products, my teachers who come to my roundtables, one of them's shaking her head at me right now, corrects me, but I don't mean that in a derogatory way. We have to be graduating kids that are ready to go into a workforce and have a fantastic economy in Central Florida. That comes because of you all. And we need to find that money together. We, I, I, you know, we're as worried about that as you, and I'm, I'm not supposed to have a conversation, so I'm going to try to behave, but it's hard for me not to talk. But I, I just wanted to share that. You know, there, we sat in the Florida School Board Association meeting last week, and my stomach was topsy-turvy going over this budget. And it's better than last year because last year, I had to go to the restroom. It, it was so disheartening. There's components that are a little bit better than last year. But we have a voucher system for people with household incomes of $87,000. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. We have voucher money that's sitting up there that hasn't been used, that they thought people would run to, to go out of the school. I could go on and on. There are dollars. They're not necessarily in the coffers we have because if you pay attention to the economy and the economists, and I'm not wishing this on us, I love our heyday right now as far as what we're doing in Central Florida, but they're expecting a downturn. And I don't want to present something to you, which is what we talk about in executive session, I'll give you this nugget of what we talk about, that we ever have to come back and say, we have to take that back because those dollars don't come to us on an annualized basis. They're coming because we're having a booming economy, not because of what happens in a downturn. I also worked in Timeshare for a very, 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 very short period of time because it wasn't an ideal place for me. And it was in a heyday, but I was also there when the crash happened and running HR when I had to walk 300 people off the job. That was a horrible day in my life, and I never want to see that again.
All right. Thank you. I, I know it is hard to believe when we say that we value you and, and we can't pay you what you think you should make. And, but I, I'm a mom of four kids. They all went to public schools. I'm a product of four, of public schools. I can't ima, I tell everybody all the time, our nation is going down the drain, but for public schools. But for the job that you do every day, we would not have a civil society. We would have half of our society in jails. We have too many of them in already. What you do is absolutely the most important thing that any governmental body does, but you're the ones who do it. It's not us, it's not all the administrators, it's you. You do it every day in that classroom. And my best friend was a teacher, and her daughter was a teacher, and her husband was a teacher, and sadly, none of them are teachers anymore. Okay? Because of what you've gone through, the long hours, the fact that I hardly even went to. I'm a product of four, of public schools. I can't ima, I tell everybody all the time, our nation is going down the drain, but for public schools. But for the job that you do every day, we would not have a civil society. We would have half of our society in jails. We have too many of them in already. What you do is absolutely the most important thing that any governmental body does, but you're the ones who do it. It's not us, it's not all the administrators, it's you. You do it every day in that classroom. And my best friend was a teacher, and her daughter was a teacher, and her husband was a teacher, and sadly, none of them are teachers anymore, okay? Because of what you've gone through. The long hours, the fact that I hardly even saw my friend anymore because she was always grading papers, and this was 10 years ago. Nothing compared to what you're going through now. I know you don't believe that I get it. I don't get it like I've lived it. I get it like I lost my best friend because she was so entrenched in having to meet those demands. And that was a better time, infinitely better time than you're living through right now. The cost of living has gone through the roof. Your salaries haven't even begun to keep up. I went from being the mayor of Orange County and turning down the opportunity to run for Congress because I wanted to be school board chair, because I wanted to advocate for you. You, because you are everything. You really are everything. If we lose you, we lose the foundation of education, which is the foundation of a civil society, which is our children's future and all of our future. I get that. I believe that. If there were pot of money that we could tap into, that we could pay you a raise and keep paying you a raise, not plug one year's deficit in healthcare with $11 million, we can do that, but next year we have the same problem. We can't fix a funding problem with a savings account. We need a steady flow of revenue. I promised I would advocate. I've been advocating. We've all been in Tallahassee advocating. I'm not trying to pass the buck. But the reality is, if you look at where states have been successful, where schools have been successful, West Virginia, Oklahoma, Arizona, Colorado, North Carolina, Kentucky, all the teachers protest, these aren't in these chambers. These are taking place at the state level because the funding comes from the state. Yes, we collect it here, but the state ultimately decides the total amount we get. Personally, here's where I am, okay? In 2009, I paid 5.4 millage rates for my state school taxes, 2009, 10 years ago. 5.4. Today, I pay 4.05. I got a full millage, and almost a millage and a half cut. Woo-hoo! That's what I wanted. I wanted a tax break so that we wouldn't have enough money to pay you. Really? Of course not. Do our parents want tax breaks? No, our parents want you paid too. So if there were money, if I believed that we could go back and come up with a pot that's richer, I would be there in, we wouldn't be here in the first place. I appreciate the sincerity of Member Kestner Dental, but I did know the problems. She did know the problems. We did know the challenges you're facing. We did think we were doing our best. If there were a better answer, why in the world would I, and why would we all not want that? We want you to stay. We want you, we don't want you living with your parents. We want you living on your own. We want you to have good healthcare. We want you to take vacation. We want you to be happy. We want you to be here. That's what we want. If we can't make it happen, it's because we don't have the money. Your energy, your passion, your stories are crucial. The only problem is, we're not the best audience because you're preaching to the choir. We, as, I understand your work, and I understand your work. I can't, but I, then maybe we, I would like to tell you, we can get them here, but we can't get them here. Because the members of the legislature that are driving funds down, the ones that gave me a one mil, a 20% cut in my school taxes in the last 10 years, they're not the ones that will come here and listen. So somehow, I know you all can't do it, but somehow, this message has to go to the state. And yes, I am looking forward to our next year. I want to bring in financial experts that can help pour through our budget and find every last dollar that we can, but it's not the dollars that you think it's going to be. We've been through that. And it's not the reserves because, like a savings account, you can use a savings account, you can spend all your money in your savings account one year. What do you have next year? You can't live on using up your savings account. So I say all of that to you because I think we're in a situation that I don't know, if we go back, I don't know that we can come up with anything other than to reshuffle the deck, and maybe we pay less across the board and we do better for benefits. But then, how have we done by the process that we've been in? So the people that aren't, that are in this room right now that want benefits to be taken care of, nobody's going to be happy at the end of this day, and I don't know that we have a better deal to put on the table. If Member Kestner Dental has a better deal to put on the table, I would really like to hear it. But just postponing this process that we've been through because you want to use reserves to pay a recurring deficiency is something I'm not, I'm not following. So I'm going to punt back to you because I do want to understand. If you have something concrete that you have considered, that you could have put on the table, that we can understand. Because that option of using reserves for a recurring deficiency in healthcare only leaves us broke next year, and it only postpones the situation we're in today. Member?
Thank you. The reserve fund could possibly go to fill the deficit of the $11 million because the deficit is not necessarily recurring.
Yes, it is. That's the problem. Member Kestner Dental, it is recurring. Every year. So what do we do next year?
The, there is also a process on Thursday where we're having a budget work session where we can ask more questions and find out more. There is also, we've talked about not finding any more money to spend on salaries, but we have not talked about what are we spending other operational dollars on. So some of those, well, I'm sure there is a list of there, but that's where we determine our priorities. Do we spend more money on iReady? Or do we spend more money on teacher salaries? Whatever, whatever your opinion is of iReady, there could be, you know, do we value teachers more? Do teachers, can teachers provide the information that iReady provides teachers? So there are some spending decisions that we could take a look at and possibly find some more funding. I don't think that we necessarily went through that whole process. So I understand that there is some hesitancy to vote to reject this agreement. If this board accepts the agreement, and then it goes forward for a vote by the teachers, and they reject it, then where they go back to the bargaining table again, and we may, I don't know what that timeline looks like, but it looks like there will be very little support among the teachers for what we have put on the table. So there are, I know that there are so many teachers out there, and I have no doubt that a group this motivated won't be communicating with their friends and colleagues. So I know not every teacher is here tonight, but there is a vast network of teachers, I mean, they're family, and they, they're family from their old schools, they're family from their current schools. They talk, and so I don't know what the outcome will be, but I know that I would like to go back and see what we can do to look at some of those spending decisions to help our teachers.
Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Member Gould, you're right. This is extremely hard for those of us who, it's the first time at the dais, trying to work through the issue. And I think that the Chair stated it wonderfully, we care. We care. We care about teachers. We care about you. If we could give you the world, we would give you the world. I want to, first, I want to say thank you. I want to thank you for all the emails that you sent me. I haven't been able to respond to all of them because in the last couple of days, based on the ones that I've read, we've all collectively been running around the district trying to get answers to your questions, so that when we did respond back, we would do so intelligently, with thought and with intention. So if you haven't heard back from me, it's not because I don't care, I'm ignoring you, it's just I'm trying to find some answers. But I do promise that I'll respond to every single email, so just give me a few days. I also want you to know that your stories touched my heart. They touched my heart when I heard them tonight. They touched my heart when I was reading them on the email. I have laid awake at night. I've had hard conversations with friends, with family. My husband is just beside himself because he doesn't know what to do with me. Because this is how important, and I only tell you this because this is how important to us. We don't take this lightly. Like, we're not up here ignoring you. I spoke to Member Bird, and she didn't sleep last night. Member Cobert's been up since 2:00 AM. We take this seriously, and we care. I also would like to apologize because I am new to this process. And if I had it to do over again, I would have asked some more pointed questions, some different questions, some things that I didn't understand. You don't know what you don't know, and you don't know until they're pointed out. And moving forward, I do now know what questions to ask, and I am hopeful that I would be able to come up with some creative ways or some creative solutions that would help us all out. I don't want the teachers in Orange County Public Schools and the district and the school board to have an adversary relationship. I do not want it to be a hostile environment. I want us to be a family. And when I went to bargaining, and they were at caucus, so they couldn't hear me, but I was speaking to some teachers, I said, I want us to be a family. A family that we're not always going to get along. A family that we're not always going to agree, and sometimes you're going to be really mad at me. And sometimes I might even be mad at you, and that's okay because we're a family. And somewhere along the way, we've lost that culture and that part of us that's so important, and I'm hoping that we can get it back. I have to say, because I did attend the bargaining, I know how hard your CTA union worked. I was there. I witnessed the back and the forth. I saw their frustration with asking questions and trying to get their questions answered. The frustrations from the district, I saw how much each of these groups worked together. And quite honestly, it was impressive, and I went because I wanted to learn more so that I could educate myself about what happens. I've also spent a lot of time talking to the district today about what our possibilities were. I've discussed the reserves. I've discussed everything that's out there. And I'm not certain that if we delay this, that we're going to come back to any different solution than we are right here. I would like to say that I know that some at the union are concerned that if we go back, that we're going to get a less offer than what's on the table right now. I would like to say in good faith that, I don't believe that to be true. I believe that we would show up in good faith, and if we had the dollars now, and this is what we have on the table, we would have it on the table again, but I, that's, I don't want to get in trouble. But I don't believe that. What I'm struggling with is the process, is that Wendy and her team did a great job bargaining, and they are the lead negotiator, and we trust them to do their job, and what kind of precedence is set. And you know, I'm worried for you guys too, because I'll be honest with you, and I've had this conversation with many teachers that I've spoken to over this weekend. There is a law that I'm sure you guys are aware of in Tallahassee that says if you fall below 50% in being a member of the union, you lose certification. And I'm asking you right now, don't let that happen. Because you do not want to live in a county where you don't have a union. So I don't, the infight, I don't want there to be infighting, again, can we be a family and go back? I mean, we need to work in unity together. So I'm up for, I'm, I don't know if I'm comfortable making a decision right this minute. I'm up to the discussion. I don't know that we can get any better, but if it would make you guys feel like your voices are being heard, and we're hearing what you're saying, for us to have another look at it, another discussion, you guys mean that much to me. I'm willing to do that, but I don't know if I'm prepared right this minute to make a decision. So I don't know what's available to us, what our options are, and what we can do.
So Member Gallo, let me direct this back to Mr. Rodriguez and to Dr. Jenkins. So question here, if we table this issue, we have our work session on Thursday regarding funding, what would be the next opportunity for us to bring this back to the board with more information and a greater comfort level, that we've done our best in negotiations, or that there's something else we can put on the table, and still be able to give the information to our employees for open enrollment? How do we squeeze, can we squeeze that into this timeline?
So our next board meeting, Madam Chair, is July 31st or July 30th?
Well, we could have a meeting in between then.
You have to properly notice it, and...
Okay.
I don't know what the schedule is for the board, but my understanding is the next advertised meeting we have now is July 30th. So that process usually takes a little bit to, you know, get it noticed and so forth, but the reality is, you have a week of 4th of July where a lot of staff members have taken time off, so the bargaining teams would have to come in and negotiate during that period of time. I am concerned about one thing, and I want to address this to Board Member Gallo. Everyone has to vote. There is no abstention on a vote. So, and it's not just directed at you, it's all board members. You may choose to vote yea or nay, but as long as a motion is pending, you have to vote. Someone can withdraw the motion, and then you don't vote. You can table an item, but under Florida statutes, unless there's a conflict, there really has to be a vote, and there will be no conflict that I'm aware of, for any of you, on this particular issue. So not my rule, I know you're a new board member, but for all board members, understanding that process, when a board member is sitting up here, you have to vote, so.
Let me ask again, just because I understand there's, we have meetings that we've noticed, Mr. Rodriguez, but we can also have emergency meetings. I don't know if this would qualify, but because if we were going to come back, I think that it is really important that we do everything that we can to have information in front of all of our teachers before they're signing up for open enrollment. That's for me, kind of the biggest challenge here. If this gets rejected tonight, I don't know what that means for open enrollment. So can we call a special meeting in July out with a date that hasn't been noticed? Do we have the ability to do that?
Absolutely. With at least 72 hours notice, you should be able to notice.
Okay. And Dr. Jenkins, when does open enrollment begin again?
Open enrollment is supposed to be this summer, so they were hoping to do it in July, August timeframe.
Okay. And my next question is, once this board, if the board revisited this, if the negotiation took place, and there were a conclusion from that, is it possible? Can you put together a timeframe to tell me whether or not it is possible to get this back, then, for the union to be able to vote on it and to still make all of that before the open enrollment? Pushing open enrollment?
So it depends on how quickly and how agreeable the negotiations are. And I hate to throw one more monkey wrench in, but you understand also, General Counsel said, any member of your 14,000 teachers, not just the union, any one of your 14,000 teachers may file a ULP because they're unhappy that they didn't have an opportunity to vote on this proposal. That will really prolong things even longer, General Counsel.
I'm just wanting the board, I'm wanting to make sure that we fully understand what our options are. I'm not complete, I think that we understand what our options are, it could be possible, and there are some ramifications. Let's go to Member Cobert, then Member Gordon.
Okay. First, I have a legal question, and then I want to propose some options. So my first question, Mr. Rodriguez, is what happens if an unfair labor practice is filed? Does that really delay the process? What happens legally if any teacher or the union files a ULP?
So I'm going to have Mr. Paul Marini come back up and address the board on this particular issue because there are some procedural steps that take place, and he's infinitely more familiar. I will just fill in to say that a non-vote, a delay, could potentially trigger that as well as I described, and, well, I didn't describe that as an option, I didn't think of that as an option at the time, but a delay as well could be foreseen as a method of an unfair labor practice as well.
So, Mrs. Cobert, I just want to make sure I understand the question. What happens if we have a delay with respect to benefits? Is that the question? And open enrollment?
What are the ramifications of an unfair labor practice that would be filed?
Procedure.
Okay. So unfair labor practice gets filed. At that point, we go into a hearing with PERC. They'll either, in 20 days, the General Counsel will decide whether or not the charge is legally sufficient. The General Counsel, if they issue a charge being legally sufficient, they will then set us for a hearing. Now, in the meantime, we could have negotiations ongoing, oh, sorry, two separate tracks. But the problem is, we could reach an agreement on track number two over here, but if track number one says we committed an unfair labor practice, then that wipes out what we do on track number one, and then we go back, or track number two, and we go back to what the process was at the beginning. And then at that point, let's say, they file an unfair labor practice saying, we didn't have a vote on this, and that was inappropriate, they would force us to hold a vote on this. That's how that would go. So regardless of what agreement we would reach on track number two while we were still negotiating, we would go back to where we were at track number one when the unfair labor practice was committed. practice was committed.
Member Gallo had a follow-up question, and then we'll come back to you, Member...
I'm sorry. Board Member Cobert, just real quick, when he's talking about General Counsel, he's referring to General Counsel of PERC.
PERC, yes.
Not me.
I'm sorry, yes. The General Counsel of Public Employee Relations Commission.
And, Member Cobert, is it okay if, and, um, Member Gallo has a follow-up? And then we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Member Cobert. I just, and maybe this isn't related, but we've already been told that we voted for OESPA contract, which we did. So, delaying this or voting on this tonight, what does that do to OESPA, which has already been voted on? What does that, does that impact OESPA? Can someone help me understand the ramifications for that?
I'll let you go ahead and say it.
Absolutely, it would, because they've negotiated and bargained in good faith as well, and their membership unit is going to be voting on a plan that includes a healthcare plan that they believe to be consistent with, you know, what they negotiated. If you negotiate something different for a different bargaining unit, essentially, you're going to have to come back and propose that for them as well, which they may or may not be in agreement. Again, the difficulty in this is about 90% of those in the entire membership of OCPS are on Plan A, or have employee-only, or have spouses that are, or partners that are members, and so therefore, their impact is not negative. It's those in Plans B and C that have family coverage, spouse, or some other plan. So, when 90% of the entire working force is not negatively impacted, yes, some are paying more, absolutely, some are paying more, they're going Plan A. And if you're employee-only and you're in Plan C, you're going to pay more, but it's $150 versus, you know, $3,000, $2,000, whatever that is. That's where the real risk comes in, and so, OESPA will be voting on something, and will be uncertain, because now they'll be thinking, "Well, what are they going to offer them? Will we get the same thing, and will we be able to negotiate that?" I don't know how it works if you can have two different healthcare plans. I don't think that's permissible, so that may be locked in as well, but, Mr. Paul Marini.
I agree with Mr. Rodriguez. Two different healthcare plans presents a lot of issues for plan design, that it would be hard for Gallagher to even design that kind of plan. And then, there's the inequities. It could open up from OESPA saying, "Hey, we're getting something different than what CTA is getting." It could be lesser than, if they were to stay with that. So, there's all sorts of avenues that could be opened on the unfair labor practice front if we went through two different processes and had two different healthcare plans.
Follow-up, go ahead.
From a parliamentary standard procedure, I know that we've already voted on OESPA. Is there any way to bring it back to the table for renegotiation? Oh, he's gone, okay. The only reason I'm asking that, because if we're reviewing dollars, teachers are our staff, but so are OESPA. OESPA's are, those are our employees and staff, too, and we can't do one for one and not the other. That's not fair, which is why I'm asking that question.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
So, from a parliamentary procedure, you can make a motion to rescind the vote at tonight's meeting, because all of you are on the prevailing side. I think the superintendent's comment is, I think the bargaining unit representative is potentially gone. I don't know if they're gone, but if they're gone, they're, obviously, you're going to revote on their issue when they went home thinking it was approved.
More of greater concern, if I may, since they have accepted this and are sending it out to their membership, what is our liability on that side if we come back and restart this negotiation?
It's, the same rational explanation has to be provided for that plan if it gets rejected, as it would be for this. Something on the record has to be said about why you are rejecting either plan, both plans. If you only reject one, it creates a very, I mean, particularly if the issue is healthcare. If it were some other aspect of the plan that was unique to teachers, I think that could be justified further in any kind of unfair labor practice challenge. But if it's just strictly on the healthcare cost, it just looks inequitable. You approved one, but not the other, and the same thing will be raised, the same issues and concerns I would have for one, I would have for the other.
So, let me go back to Member Cobert, because you asked a question, you got an answer, and we interrupted your, um, okay, comment period, please.
So, as Member Gallo told you, I've been up since 2:00 in the morning worrying about this, and of the nearly 100 emails, I've tried very hard to answer all of the emails. And sometimes I did have to repeat what I said, because I was really trying to answer everyone who took the time to reach out to me. So, I do apologize if I was repetitive or said the same things to multiple people. I tried to personalize where I could, but I thought it was more important to respond to all of you. And I really want this to be collaborative, not confrontational. I care about each and every one of you. I have countless teacher friends. I've told many of you, my sister is an OCPS teacher, my niece is an OCPS teacher, my children have all gone through OCPS. You all matter greatly to me, and I want to see what we can do, but I want to do this in a way that also doesn't harm, that does no harm. So, I'd like to see us go back and revisit this. I agree with that. I think there are some places we could go back and look. The one mil was brought up, and how that one mil is spent. So, we might need to go back and look at how that was spent, knowing, though, that we're going to lose some things. So, it was spent, when it says, "Preserve academic programs and retain highly qualified teachers," it paid the salary of 859 teachers, and those are teachers, counselors, social workers, and that includes college and career readiness teachers, CTE teachers, that we wouldn't have had. So, we would have to lose some programs or teachers. It protects art, dance, drama, and music teachers, so that we have art and music programs in every one of our schools. We might have to revisit that. It protects athletics, pays for coaches and athletic trainers. That's something that could be on the table. My point is, we can go back and look at that and pour that into salaries, but we have to look at what we're going to lose as well. And again, that may be something that has to be delayed before the voters. I talked to Woody today about, in the future, you know, we have the half penny. That has to be used only for capital, maintenance, and digital. In the future, is that something that we could ask for a change with the taxpayers? There are places that we could look locally, but the number-one source of dollars that we don't have is from the state of Florida. Yesterday, a state representative, as I was walking downtown, happened to see him across the street, happened to take that opportunity to walk three blocks with him, because I take every opportunity to talk to our state legislators about what they're doing to our people. And he apologized for putting us all in this position. Wouldn't be his position to consistently roll back the required local effort, like Chair Jacobs talked about. None of us asked for a tax cut on our property taxes. None of us asked for that. And the reality is, they're still funding us at the same dollar level per student that was over 10 years ago. So, trying to dig out these raises year after year has been gut-wrenching, and things will have to go. So, we will have to look at and weigh out those priorities. I actually trust both sides. I've worked really, really hard to have a great working relationship with all of your leadership in the CTA. I've worked really, really hard to get to know and trust the management team here at OCPS. And I believe with all my heart that every board member up here has your best interests at heart, that the management team, that CTA, everybody in this room wants the same thing. What you ought to get is, starting with a $10,000 raise across the board, that's what you ought to get. But how do we problem-solve, and how do we get there? Every state that has made a significant change, it has happened at the Capitol. And so, I'm not saying that we can't do better. I think that we can. I think Member Castro Dental has brought up some great points. I've looked through, I see some places where we would have to move around money. We need to look at our accountability system that's forced on us by the state, and how much money does that cost? How much money does that cost for all of the testing? And what good does that do for our students or our teachers? So, the money has got to come from the state. In the meantime, can we dig deeper and look for every dollar? Probably. So, my concern, I don't want to do harm tonight, so my concern with delaying this, if there's a ULP filed and we delay for 20 days, I'm worried about what happens with your healthcare. I'm worried about delaying any salary raises. I almost feel like what we should do is, is send it to the teachers, urge your colleagues to vote it down, vote no, and then we can come back to the negotiating table. We can also come back to the negotiating table at any time. But, well, I don't know. That's a question we need, that's a question that we need to ask, is what's the timeline, what's the timeline on ratification, and if we went back to the negotiating table?
Absolutely. So, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Sir, 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 please.
I'm so sorry. I appreciate what you're saying, but it's still out of order. Mr. Rodriguez?
I hear you. I want to go through the right process so that we don't do any harm.
Sir, no comments from the audience, sir.
That's what we're asking. That's what we're asking.
Member, I'm sorry, but if we do this, the whole meeting breaks down pretty quickly. So, we understand the question, and it's a question's been rolling around in my head. We send it out, let the people vote, okay? Comes back, it's declined. Where are we in process? And what does that, what does that mean?
And the difference is, you cannot file a ULP either side if the union membership or the bargaining unit membership decides to reject it, because it's gone through the proper process. You've let it vet itself out, you've let the union support or not support, send out whatever. And by the way, I have to remind the board, it is not your role to advocate or encourage the passage or the, you know, the failure of any measure that goes to the unit. That in and of itself, your role is not to encourage or discourage anyone from approving. Your comments from the board are that their colleagues, the folks in here, can encourage or discourage, and I understand that.
Mr. Rodriguez, the question is also a timing of, it goes out, it's not accepted, when does that get back to us? What does that mean to open enrollment, and what does that mean to the process moving forward? Just so we understand the timelines on both.
I'm going to have Mr. Paul Marini come back up again. I think it's about, you know, at least 10 days to probably get it sent out and voted on, but they've, because it's summertime, I don't know how long the process takes. Do you know?
Mr. Paul Marini.
Okay, Ms., let's have the CTA president answer, because I think that's her process.
Ms. Dormel, if you can, if you can take the podium, we have a question about, sorry, Ms. Wendell, if you, or Ms. Dormel, if you can come to the podium, what we're trying to figure out, how long do you think it would take to send it out and?
We were going to have it sent out and give enough time for people to have, to think about it, because 4th of July week, and then have the votes counted on, I believe it was the 22nd of July.
And, okay.
Because you have to pay for printing and postage and get it done, the process.
So, at that point, Mr. Rodriguez, at that point, we're looking at the last week in July. We have two options. It passes, we know the course we're on. It fails, and we are now starting the process over again.
Correct.
And Dr. Jenkins, we are also unsure what insurance plan we're offering, unless we're not, because we have committed ourselves to the OESPA plan. Is that, can you answer that, or not? I don't, I agree, I don't think that we can have different plans. I think our plan is our plan.
I think the uncertainty is, if OESPA approves a plan, and the union, the teachers' union rejects that plan as it is, we will really have very little room to bargain, if at all, with the union regarding the issues of healthcare, because at that point, you've locked in a portion of your membership with one plan. If you make changes to the healthcare plan, then you're going to probably have to come back to OESPA and offer them a similar opportunity to ratify or not ratify that plan. The, I mean, that's really where you are, so...
Member Cobert. Good line of questioning.
Thank you. I just, I'm usually not at a loss for words, but I just really want you to know, I'm up here tonight, this is new territory for every one of us. I just want to find the best solution for you in a way that doesn't harm you, and that's what I'm trying to mete out. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Gould.
I think it was, it was kind of said, "I wanted to know about the timeline of the vote and what that process would be," because that seems the cleanest route to discover an outcome on where we'll be by the middle to end of July, and that we would then be able to be prepared for either direction, and to move swiftly with either direction so that we can make sure all bargaining units have what they need. So, in my observation of this, and thinking and knowing that the CTA does ask targeted questions about every budget line item, and that we go through it at the budget committees, and then they do it again at the bargaining, I don't want to delay it, no matter what the outcome of the vote would be, with complicating it with PERT or the law. So, my recommendation would be that we would move it through to the teachers to get all of their input and their response, and then there seems like there would be more power one way or the other to move forward with coming up in any way we can. And I'm not confident that there would be any more money, but I think then we have a cleaner process.
I know that steps on the motion, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, no, okay. Member Castro Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is complicated, and it seems as though the quickest resolution would be to approve it as a board, so that the teachers can vote, and vote either up or down, and then the result, if it's approved, then that route is already predetermined. If it's rejected, then that route would then go back to the bargaining table. We can't, I guess, do much about OESPA right now, but we can go forward with... They could also vote no. That's, that would depend on, not us up here, but that would depend on talking to members of OESPA. But I am, I am willing to withdraw my motion if that is a quicker solution, that is less risky, that would, if the potential for a ULP will cause extra delays, making it more difficult for teachers. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the board first.
I'm very, I'm very...
I'm done.
You're done? Okay, I'm sorry. Member Gallo? I don't know how that just happened. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Member Castro Dental, for everything that you do, for advocating for these, I know these teachers just appreciate how hard you work for them. I would agree with Member Castro Dental, if that's the quickest way without any type of labor process happening, and I'm sorry, it's late, I'm getting tired, happening against us, and with really kind of taking into consideration OESPA and the fact that we did approve their contract and that not being fair to them, I would be in agreement to put it to a vote. I do want the teachers here to know that regardless of what happens, we've heard you tonight, and we promise that we've collected... you tonight and we promise that we're, we've collectively, you've heard us all, and you can hold our feet to the fire, that we're going to look at this budget, that we're going to look at the reserves, and we're going to look at ways that we can take some of the dollars that are flexible, that are non-reoccurring, and figure out how that we, we could use them. We're going to look at policy. I, I heard a lot of complaints tonight about policy and classrooms and things that you're unhappy about. We are going to look at policy and try to find ways to make your job easier, make it more flexible in your classroom. We're, we're going to look at all those things. So, even if the outcome that you came here tonight isn't what happens because of reasons already stated on this board, I want you to know that we've heard you. We're here for you. I, I want to hear your input. I want you to keep sending me the emails. I want you to send me suggestions and solutions. Send them to me, I will read them, I will pass them along, and I'll see, we will all see what we can do to help. Thank you.
Let's, Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very concerned with if we rejected the OESTA insurance and the instructional insurance, we, that's kind of a double message that we're saying that the non-instructional is not as valued as the instructional, and we really value everybody. We value our teachers, and we value our non-instructionals as well. So, I highly appreciate all the hard work from, from the CTA team and also from our representative to put this together because it's very difficult, as you can see. I understand this is a very hard situation, conversation. So, whose outcomes will affect the day-to-day of our lives of thousands of teachers and their families across Central Florida. So, I am thankful to you for all your work. However, I am here to represent the voice of my constituents. While I was aware of the district proposal, I also apologize because I did not, as Karen Kestrel Dental said, and also Gallo, I did not make the, the questions that I supposed to, to make at that moment. So, after that, I have received hundreds of comments through emails and social media outlets that demonstrate concerns about this contract. Particularly, our teachers are concerned about changing the insurance. I was thinking about the insurance, and if you have family, you're going to be affected. And if you're a single mother, I'm a single mother, so I am, I'm going to be affected as well because I'm still have the same salary. As school board members, we have the salary of a first-year teacher. I don't know if you know that. It's starting, starting...
It's not part-time.
It's not, exactly. It's not a part-time because I work more than 50 hours a, a week. So, just to make sure that you understand our salary as well, I used to be a teacher and I earned $15,500 more money a year. So, it is very important to make our teachers feel valued and respected, and I don't think this argument does that. This agreement does that. Finally, I also want to encourage our teachers to take this fight to Tallahassee. As the decision made by our state government is greatly limited, so I believe that, and I heard the, one of our committee members from the CTA, that he wa, he was saying that he, it would be great if you are part of the CTA. I believe the same thing. Because when you unite your force to fight for your beliefs and your perspective, we all get stronger. I believe that you deserve a better salary. I believe that you deserve the insurance that you have and better than what we have right now. So, as a former teacher, I hear you, I value you, and I respect you. Thank you for being here, and I am willing to support the changes that Karen already explained because I think that the delay is going to be less. But if I have to make any change based in our conversation at the end, just to represent you, I will also do it.
Thank you, Member Lopez. Member Byrd?
Okay. Well, I'm glad I waited till last because I knew that all you smart ladies would have great things to say. So, let me just ask a quick question, though. Is it, is it possible to, for the board to give a bonus without going through bargaining? Or does it have to go through bargaining? All bonuses?
So, I can tell you, anytime we have, this is a good answer, wait a minute. I can tell you, anytime we've offered additional bonuses in January, it always goes through both of our bargaining units, but they usually say, where do we sign? There, there is no debate over that. We've done that in the past. The board authorizes an executive session, then the union, because it is compensation, the union has to agree to it. But I, I can promise you, Member Byrd, I've never seen the union not agree to it.
Okay. So, therefore, what I'm getting at is that this, that is an option we can look at, correct? This, this year to help, to help, I know it's not a salary, and I know it's not what we want, but we could offer an additional bonus to offset some of these insurance costs, right? As something we could...
That is correct.
Okay. Just trying to think of what we can do for this year to help. Okay, and the, I just want to clear up one more, one thing about the insurance deficit. We're saying, I just, I got a little bit of mixed information because this week I was told that the insurance deficit is because we had some catastrophic claims this past year. Therefore, that's not necessarily reoccurring, am I correct? I mean, unless...
Dr. Jenkins, the year before, what was the status of the year before? Huh? Deficit. So, the year before, we used reserves. Is that right?
It was the benefit trust.
I'm sorry, yes. It's, it's the trust reserve in the insurance program that's designed for catastrophic situations. We had to use that the year before. This year, we're looking at 11 million right now. Will probably be higher than that by the time we close out this year. So, the trend, and this is not us alone, those of you who serve on the, or attend the committee, the regional, no, I'm sorry, the Central Florida, the Coalition of School Boards, Osceola County dealing with this, all of the counties are dealing with this. So, this trend in healthcare, and it's not just, it's, it's not just school districts, Orange County government, everybody is dealing with this, that the costs continue to go up. I do believe that what we're doing right now, I, this is an area, kind of like you have your areas, we all have our different areas, this is an area I know a fair amount amount, and being self-insured is our best option. So, it, for people that have suggested we should just shop around, we, we did, and that's how we ended up with self-insurance. But the trend is not favorable, and plugging it with reserves is what we did last year. We can't, we don't have any more reserves for the insurance trust. Now, we would be going to our general reserves, and they're not replenishable. So, it's not like we put more money in every year. That's the same set of 4.3%.
Yeah. And I understand the idea of not using for recurring. My question was...
What your understanding and my understanding might, sounded different because you thought catastrophic one time won't happen again.
Right.
What I see is catastrophic trend.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I think I am, I have been up and down, all around with this for days, and I, my biggest concern here is for our, the rest of our employees, the ones I have not heard from. I've heard from about 80 teachers through email, which, by the way, thank you for those emails, and let me just say that those emails are the kinds of emails that our representatives need to get every day. We need to be bombarding their inbox with those same emails, personal, like about how, you know, you're living with parents and you can't afford a car, you know, all these stories. These are the stories they need to be hearing because it's, it's like they just don't, are oblivious to what's going on. So, and especially the representatives that are the ones that are continually tearing down our public education every year. Those, and if you need a list of those specific legislators, I'm sure that our legislative chair over here can give you that list. That would, those are the ones that need to be reached. We, you know, those, those emails were amazing. So, I heard from about 80 emails there. I saw the social media posts, I saw the, the group, I saw the petition. But it's still not our 14,000 teachers, and this is my other biggest issue, it's not our 10,000 classified employees. Those are the ones that I'm really worried about as well. I want to know how they feel about this, and I feel like I'm not going to get to know how they feel about it unless they get to vote on it. And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm leaning more towards letting it go to the vote because I want to hear from all of them, not just the ones that I have already heard from. And I think that that provides the le, the least risk for us as far as, as far as your health plan and what everyone else has already said. So, so I think that that's where I sit right now, but, yeah.
Okay. Just, just summarize what I've heard, and then I'm going to, Member Colbert. So far, I ha, I've heard, obviously, a lot of concern, but so far, every member that I've heard from has indicated that at this point, based on the knowledge they have, they think putting it to a vote is the more appropriate next step, and then if it's, if it's rejected, coming back and revisiting it. But let me hear from Member Colbert and Member Gordon, and then we'll come back to you, Member Kestrel Dental.
Essentially, you said exactly what I was going to say. I, I, I want to reiterate, I think the best option, the safest option for the teachers, not, not for us, for the teachers, is to let it go to a vote for the teachers, see what happens there, and then whether it's accepted or rejected, there's room to come back and renegotiate, whether that's in the form of, of mid-year, whether that's going back and looking at OESPA, because I certainly would not want to have a widely varying healthcare plan for our service employees than our instructional employees.
Thank you. Let, let me ask, um, Member Kestrel Dental. Are you going to withdraw your motion? I know. Well, I need to hear from the motion maker before I hear from the secondary. Is that, was that, oh, thank you.
I, I think it's, it would be, after listening to the, the potential delays in solving this issue, if we were to vote it down tonight, I, I think a better way moving forward would be to accept the agreement, avoid unfair labor practice, send it out to a vote, and bring it back, and that would be quicker than if we were to reject it tonight. And I've, I would have to go pretty strong, I feel pretty strongly that it would not pass the teachers. So, but that is another risk that we, that we face, putting it back out there. But that, that's part of the process anyway. So, I do respect the process. But I also respect the voices of teachers who have weighed in and who are very serious about how this agreement will affect them. So, here is a chance for teachers to vote yes or no, and give us back the same information, and we can go forward. So, given that, and listening to the board members and, and hearing that your concerns, you share my concerns and the people who are here, I will withdraw the motion. And we can move forward.
Okay. Let me check with the secondary. Does the secondary agree to withdraw the motion? Okay, the, the motion is withdrawn from the floor, withdrawn from the table. I, I want to make one comment. The comment that Member Byrd made about your emails, she's absolutely right. Those stories need to be told over and over again. But I also want you to know that most of our delegation is with you. And that makes this tough, okay? Because the members that we have up there are with you, but they're not being successful. And so, this is where, and I know I heard somebody over here say, how are we supposed to get to Tallahassee? This is where the heavy lift comes in. It's not just you. It needs to be statewide. You need to be so connected with your statewide association, and those stories are real stories, and our citizens would never tolerate it if they understood the situation that you face every day. They would not tolerate it. And I, I agree with Member Colbert. Unfortunately, we're probably looking at, can we give 4%? Or maybe is there a way to eke out 4.5%? And that's pitiful. That's pitiful. We should be talking about 20,000. We should be talking minimum 10,000. We need to get to the point where it's a livable salary and the point where people say, you know what? I think I actually want to go into teaching because I can support my family and do something I love. Those should not be mutually exclusive. We're not going to get there until we can galvanize all of our teachers and our parents. The parents that spoke are important in this equation too because they represent an independent voice. Nobody can claim them that they're greedy. Our parents want you to get, to do better. We want more for you. They do, we do, we're, we're all up here as parents. Some are teachers, some are teacher parents. So, the challenge for you is to work with the statewide association to help get as many teachers as we can to Tallahassee, and when you can't make it, send those personal stories. And Wendy, or, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but the problem with meeting with them here is that most of ours already agree. And that's where we need to work with a bigger, a state, the statewide organization, and there's nobody better than Angie when it comes to this in terms of knowing who you need to talk to. And having somebody like Karen Kestrel Dental, who previously served in the legislature on the side of the House, who already supported you, still is an invaluable tool and resource to working together. We are on the same team. We, none of us ran for this office because we wanted to see anything less than the best for our teachers. It's how do we get there and how do we get there best? So, with that, I'm going to turn to Member Gordon, who's to be recognized next, and we do need a motion.
The mo, the motion that, that we accept the superintendent's recommendation along with the, the CTA bargaining team, and that we work with this tentative agreement to allow this agreement to move forward, because I feel that everyone that sat on that team and represented you, and even you being here tonight, not being happy because the team didn't hear all of your pain, they may have heard it, but yet you're not in the position that they are in. So, with that in mind, I feel that I thank you for being here. I thank you for your voice. I hope that you join us. Every time the PTA, those parents came, you don't really know how hard parents fight for you. Somebody said, you said, how do you get to Tallahassee? We went on the bus. I got on that bus with the parents. So, get on the bus with the parents. We even pay for the bus. I've done it. I've done it. And parents, ain't that right, parents? We've gone on the bus. But you need to go with your union because everybody has a day. So, with that in mind, I feel that both teams have bargained in good faith, and this tentative agreement, I'm in, I'm moving that we take the recommendation of both of these teams and move forward.
All right, we have a...
And allow all teachers to vote.
We have a motion to approve the recommended action, do we have, by Vice Chair Gordon, do we have a second? Second by, I'm sorry, a second by Member Kestrel Dental. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you all very much for being here with us. Thank you for all your input in this process. Thank you for your civility. Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. Ladies, five-minute recess. Can I start, Mem, uh, Dr. Gordon? No, you, oh, no, no, I'm saying, can I start? Oh, no, oh, you... Oh, no, oh, you waiting for her?
I was asking the general.
Oh, I see. Forgot. Because you figure why you're waiting for her? Okay, well, let's go ahead and let's get back. We're back in session. We have one more item on the agenda for an action item. Little confusion on the agenda. That is Item 1702, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Item 1702, that was moved to non-consent, request approval of the 1920 salary increases, bonus payments, and so on and so forth. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, as has been the practice of this Board, at the same time that you approve OESPA and CTA tentative agreements, you also provide the same increase for your administrators, as was secretly shared. I think Dr. Gordon almost told the number when we were at our management retreat at the summit, but.
I did not, for the record.
You did, you did not.
I did not.
You stuck to the code. You actually did stick to the code. And while Dr. Gordon threatened she didn't actually tell it, but it has been the practice of the Board, the same time that they agree, approve the tentative agreements for your two bargaining units, our principals administrators, district administrators, who do not have a union negotiating team as some have in the state of Florida, you have always honored the same for them. And so before you under 1702 is the increase for your administrators, the increase and the bonus payment for your administrators.
Okay. Thank you. Member Kestrel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I asked this to be put on the non-consent when we were discussing the OESPA and the CTA agreements. And since this is also discussing salary, revised salary structures, I would like to pull some of the proposals for now, the ones that are administrative, non-school-based, and school-based administrator performance salary, leaving the hourly salary schedule, the school food service, but looking at the administrative and school-based administrative, essentially. And putting that on hold, just, not that the people on this are not deserving of an increase, but given that we just went through a very contentious discussion about the dollars that we don't have to give to teachers and staff, it is difficult for me to support when there is such a great difference in what the level of compensation these people have versus our teachers. It's hard for me to go forward and recommend at this time that we approve it. So I would like to just move that we hold, or temporarily hold, these salary increases until we have some settlement with the teachers and OESPA.
So let me just, for clarification, because we have one, two, three, four, five, six different items under this, which specific ones are you, I know you just said them, but which specific ones are you suggesting that we postpone a decision on?
Let's see. The executive management salary schedule. The titles are not all clear. The, excuse me, the school-based administrator performance salary schedules, that includes principals at the top. And the other one is the administrative technical salary that starts with, I believe, a physical therapist on the first line, I believe. So it'd be those three that are at the higher end of our compensation for now.
Okay. And Dr. Jenkins.
So I have to tell you, I would be a poor CEO if I did not tell you that is something that totally flies in the face of what I believe is appropriate. What I can tell you, we've done in the past, we have never moved forward with the actual payout, if I recall correctly. We certainly would not move forward with the payout before the other raises are also negotiated. But why would we put these particular individuals outside of everyone else who has their agreements approved tonight? Because I think what you're going to be doing is forcing our administrators to believe they have to unionize. I would prefer that they not unionize. I think an offer to them that is equal to what is being offered to both OESPA and CTA is appropriate for your administrators who work hard every day to get the work done. They are just as deserving of a raise. To split out particular groups here, I don't even know if the resolution, I suppose General Counsel can advise us if the resolution can be amended or withdrawn or split up a single resolution. But I do not agree that you treat your administrators differently than the other two groups that you've approved tonight. It has been our practice that we not actually move forward with the administering of the raises until the other bargaining units are in place, so everyone is done at the same time. I believe that's been our practice. I can certainly assure the Board that would be the case here as well. I ask you not to add that differential treatment to your administrators who work extremely hard as well.
Member Gould, Member Lopez after Member Gould.
I'm arguing with myself internally right now. The argument is not on whether we move forward with this group. The argument is on the perception. And part of what I'm struggling with is that we did already pass an agreement with OESPA. We have come back and had a lot of very valuable discussion and the kind of groundswell that we absolutely need in this state, in every community, to actually happen in order to effect change. Because there's, at the end of the day, I truly believe there's very limited resources that we can do a lot with, no matter how things move forward from here on the CTA vote. So the question is, as a Board, is it right to hold up one classification of people when we've passed one and we're letting the other determine the fate of their agreement? So I don't have an answer. I'm thinking out loud.
Thank you. Well, we did a lot of that for the last two hours, and I think it worked well because we learn from each other's thoughts in this process, and I've got some I look forward to sharing as well. So, Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you hear me? What is the percentage of increment in the proposed minimum? What is the, yeah, the proposed?
Okay, so when you look, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So when you, we're all tired. So let me be precise. Your principals are on a pay-for-performance as well, and so their raises have to be based on what the requirements are for their income. Others are on a 4% increase, where you see the schedules adjusted, that's a compensation function. If you have folks who are on a salary schedule and they would hit the ceiling, then you adjust the schedule 2% at the top, 2% at the bottom. That's the way the schedules are adjusted.
Because I see like 3,000, almost 3,000, the proposed minimum for each position? No?
Are you talking principals? So school-based administrators?
I'm in the executive management salary schedule. Am I in the right?
Yeah, those are 2% on the top and 2% on the bottom.
Okay. And the principal?
Principals, in the actual context of the resolution, they have requirements. The principal salary schedule is based on dollar amounts, similar to what the teachers have, based on their performance. Principals have differing dollar amounts for their raises.
Thank you. It's in the background section of the resolution. Dr. Jenkins, I have a question also. So back to the executive management salary. I saw that they were 2% structural change. Are we talking about a 4% salary increase for these?
Yes, yes, 4% raise. The schedules is the additional action you have to take to adjust the schedules so that you can accommodate.
So, again, like Member Gould, thinking out loud, I think in light of what we've just heard, because there is more uncertainty than probably normal about whether this contract's going to be accepted by the union, and that the OESPA contract also may or may not be accepted by the union, that if we're in a situation where we come back and renegotiate, and for some reason we decide to pick up larger portion of the insurance expense and a lesser portion of that revenue that we have goes towards raises, I think that's unlikely, but assume that we give a lower raise, but we cover more insurance, then we would be in a situation where our executive team would have the benefit of what we're contributing to the insurance plan and the benefit of a higher raise. So in light of that, I think it does make sense to hold off on this until after the decision is made and we know what our insurance plan is. I will also share with you that my first year in office as mayor, we were in a similar situation where we had just changed the insurance program. There's a lot of unhappiness over the higher deductibles and the higher premiums. And the only way that I could find to try to offset that meant that I also asked our senior leadership to accept, actually, I think I asked them to forego salary change just that one year, so that we could show to our lesser-paid employees how much we valued them. So I'm not suggesting that we do that today. I did get some information. I found that it has a very small impact, and even a complete freeze has a very, very small impact on our teachers and our classified personnel. And I don't think that that is a trade-off. That is a trade-off that makes a lot of sense. I think if we could give a serious, significant raise, it might be worthwhile. But under the circumstance that we could be in a situation of completely restructuring or reevaluating how much we pay for the insurance, I think it would behoove us to hold off on this decision until we have that back. That's my thinking out loud. I'm not married to that position, but that's my current thought on it at the moment. Then we have, Dr. Jenkins, Member Gordon's next, but I think you wanted perhaps to respond to what I was saying.
No, actually, it was just a further clarification. So if, so both the CTA and the OESPA contracts, if they are ratified, not saying they will be, but if they are ratified, that does not have to come back here. We move immediately into raises and benefit plan and so forth. This group would be left out until you meet again July 31st. And so, logistically, I thought it was useful to have all three geared up, queued up. They don't make it if we end up back at the drawing board. I certainly understand your concern there as well. There's no union here to give you a ULP if we have to rework something.
No.
But between now and July 31st, we would move forward, and actually Wendy talked about getting the vote done much more rapidly because we're going to help them. If it were ratified, it never comes back to you. It actually gets done probably by the time we meet again at the end of July.
Dr. Jenkins, let me suggest, based on what you just said, that there might be a third alternative. One is that we table this until after the decision by the two unions. One is that we approve this today, and it's technically binding on us. Or the third could be that we approve it contingent upon it being ratified. And so in that case, you are not, okay. Okay, so everybody clear on those three options? I don't think Member Gallo is.
No.
Okay, no, it's okay. I love body language. Thank you for being transparent to me. I look down there, I'm like, nope. Okay, so one option, we table this decision until we hear from the two unions, because there could be, we could be lowering the raises and upping the insurance benefits. The second option is, we just approve this today, knowing that we could have the unions reject theirs, and now we've committed to a salary compensation to this group of people where they may be benefiting from an insurance benefit also, which was not our intent. And then the third option is, we approve these items contingent upon both the contracts, the CTA and the OESPA contract being ratified. So at that point, all of our employees are being treated the same. They're all getting the same benefit as we would have anticipated if we had moved everything forward today. But we don't run that possibility that our higher-level employees actually receive the benefit of both, which would certainly not be in our intent. And none of our employees out here, I don't think would want that either, to be, to benefit on both sides of the equation. Hang on a second. Is that a follow-up question on mine? And then I'll go, okay. Follow-up question on that, and then I'm going to go back.
So just a follow-up, when we say, are we just going to pick out that one group contingent upon ratifying? Or will everything that falls under Section 5.03 be contingent on the OESPA and union being ratified?
That depends on who makes the motion and what they say with the motion. I think that what you just pointed out, to me, makes a lot of sense. Everybody should be on the same playing field. But that would be my preference, but it depends again on who makes the motion and whether it gets modified and so on and so forth. Member Gordon.
Yes, thank you so very much. I am in agreement with the proposal that is on the table, especially based on all of the administrators. I'm in approval for it because it really does not interfere as much, even as Dr. Jenkins stated, when it comes back. But at least we would be in line, and then at least it could roll out. But the increase, the bonuses are basically the same. Your school-based administrators, I mean, they, there are only two groups under Marzano. That's your school-based administrators. If their schools don't do good, and you really got to be careful about your schools, I'm serious, and my, I keep an eye on mine too, but your schools, that's another conversation that we'll have probably at a later date. But those school-based administrators are under Marzano, and they are under performance pay, just like I am, okay? All teachers are. If those principals do not do well in that school, you're going to go to Dr. Jenkins and say, and if you don't go and say that your community is not happy, well, that principal cannot stay there. You saw what happened in one of your districts. And we lost that administrator. We lost that administrator. And my heart hurts because we allowed people to come in and talk against a great person that started a whole situation that wanted to be there, and then you've now, she's gone somewhere else. That tore up my heart when I found out that she was gone. But she was excellent to get things started there. But because you had disgruntled parents, I don't know who made decisions that I didn't know about it, that I was shocked when I inquired of where was she placed, they told me she was gone. She was gone. That hurt me. So that's a lot for principals to go under. So the reason why I'm in favor, and I'm going to tell you why I'm in favor, because I understand, and I'm not going to say that you don't understand the process. I think you're learning the process, but this is why you try to follow the process. We have our executive sessions to bring this to the table. This was not. This was not brought to the table by the superintendent. This was brought to this table by approval of this board. I don't know if you understand that. And if I sit up here, and I'm in executive session, and I don't know what the hell I'm talking about, I'm going to ask questions. But I'd be dogged if I'm going to get up here in public and debate something that I thought that I understood in executive session, and then I'm voting against myself. So, this is the same thing with OESPA. I'm not going to vote against that because we said, bring it to the table, we're all in agreement. When it came to the teachers, we said, bring it to the table, we're all in agreement. That's how it got agendaed. Now, there are some things Dr. Jenkins and her staff brings, and we're really not always in favor of that. But I was under the impression, we were all in agreement. And we said, go for it, whatever. But I will not sit up here because somebody sent me, and I'm not saying that, I'm speaking for myself, sent me an email. They were disgruntled. I don't even think that they really looked at their insurance like they should. A lot of people really don't. They, people know when they have to make changes. It's not going to ever satisfy 100% of the staff. It's never going to have 100%. So, basically, my recommendation is to approve the 2019-20 salary increases and payments that we stated with the technical general procedures and guidelines that we all discussed. I don't see anything new tonight that would make me not vote for this.
Thank you, Member Gordon. Member Gallo?
I forgot my question. I guess the question is this. Are these in line with other large districts, the payouts to our administrative staff? Or are they in line with what other districts are currently paying their administrative, non-school-based administrative staff?
Madam Chair?
Please, Dr. Jenkins.
We pay as well and sometimes less than other districts. It just depends on who you're comparing us with. We are, we believe we're competitive. We've lost, in some instances, talent to other districts that pay more. But I have to tell you, though, I'm very comfortable, maybe this will help our conversation go more swiftly. I'm very comfortable with the third option of the contingent upon. That would certainly work well for everyone involved. I just don't want our principals, assistant principals, administrators to think they are being treated significantly different than the other, than the union groups. And so, that contingency, I think, is a wonderful compromise. I appreciate the chairman suggesting. And thank you, Ms. Gordon, who recalls all of our deliberations and the history of how we've done this in the past as well. Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Member Gallo, anything else?
Yeah, just quickly, okay. I'm fine with that as well, with the third option. I think we have wonderful, a wonderful administrative staff, and I don't want to do anything that would make them feel any less valued than we want our teachers or other staff to feel.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does that include the health insurance as well?
It's the same.
The same kind of the instructional.
Yeah, and all of that, it's not saying we're not proving it. We're just saying that the goal is to be consistent with our instructional staff and OESPA. And so, it'd be contingent upon being consistent, which is not something I think we contemplated.
Yeah, I agree on the third option as well.
Very good. Member Kesterdennel, we're back to you. Do you have a motion on the floor? I can't remember. You threw out what you were concerned about, but I don't think it was a formal motion.
No one seconded it, so it's not a motion.
And I'm opposed.
I don't think it was a motion. I think it was a, yeah. Let's talk about this discussion.
You know what it was? You threw out something. I questioned what exactly you meant, and I interrupted your, so we don't have a motion that would need to be voted on or withdrawn.
There is not a motion.
Okay.
However, I am happy to put one forth. I want to just reiterate that my hesitancy in just outright approving it tonight is based on the show that we had today of our teaching professionals where we discussed people not being able to buy a house. Not, I mean, they're doing everything they can, they're working two jobs. I'm not saying that our team here doesn't deserve what they're making, but that the amount is so much greater that I think it's just fair to say we are going to hold off on approving these raises, even if they're slight raises, because there is such a great difference in salary, and just wait until we ratify the other agreements. I am comfortable with that. In fact, I will go ahead and move that we approve the salary schedules on 5.03, all of them contingent upon ratification of the other two contracts.
We have a motion by Member Kesterdennel. Do we have a second? Second by Member Cobert. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry. Member Gould, you pushed your button. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all members voting in the affirmative except for Member Vice Chair? All members voting in the affirmative except for Vice Chair Gordon, who voted in the opposition. Okay. It confirms it as long as those two contracts are ratified by both unions. So, if we have to go back and revisit the healthcare component and reduce the.
Okay, so, we're not voting on what we put on the table, the superintendent and the board?
We just vote, what we were voting on is to make that.
Let me get it for you because I need to get that clear.
We voted to approve all of that.
So, you added an amendment to it? Because I didn't hear that.
We voted for all of this.
I didn't hear it like that. I didn't hear it like that. It wasn't stated like that.
That was what I had suggested could be an alternative.
Yeah, but it's all confused.
I know. It's getting quite.
Okay, let's get this thing together. Because I need to know what I'm voting on.
The motion was to approve all of those.
It's fine. Right here.
Yeah.
Okay, here it is. Okay, this is the recommendation action. So, what did we add in that? Will you repeat it for me, please?
Yes.
And then I have to pull back, I'm sorry.
All of that contingent upon.
No, will you, will you repeat what we voted on? Because I may have made an error.
Okay, no problem.
Because I'm in the recommendation action.
Uh huh.
And I want to know how different it is. So, can you have that repeated, please?
To approve the 2019-20 salary increases, bonus payments, and revised salary structure for school-based administrators, technical staff, executive management, food service managers, hourly and administrative technical general procedures and guidelines contingent upon ratification of the CTA and OESPA contracts.
Okay, I just need to ask the superintendent to help me with the contingent because it's always been contingent. So, I'm confused there. And I want to make sure my vote goes in the right place. Contingent upon, so you're adding the words what?
Contingent upon ratification of the contracts with CTA and OESPA.
So, was that necessary? Because we would have done it anyhow.
Madam Chair? Ma-, Dr. Jenkins?
So, in a normal day, under normal circumstances, it wouldn't have been necessary.
Thank you.
Tonight, it is necessary. Let's just wrap it up.
Okay, so, if you, okay, so that is a recommendation coming from the superintendent to the chair.
That's correct, Dr. Gordon.
All right, then, I will vote. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I will vote.
Okay.
Then change my vote, please, for the administrative.
Let the record reflect that Vice Chair, her motion, her vote should show as affirmative after further clarification. Perfect.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Absolutely. Okay. Dr. Jenkins, informational items. I did not get a chance, Dr. Jenkins, to let everybody know that we are going to come back and do the assessment presentation at a later time. Is that correct?
At a later time, we will do progress monitoring.
Yeah. Thank you.
I only had one thing to report, and this is something positive. I almost forgot. We won the big award. National School Public Relations Association gave us a Golden Achievement Award. That is the top award. We submitted for our stellar awards program. If you remember our big product.
We got an award for an award?
National recognition. It's from INSPIRA. That's the National School Public Relations Association. We won some other categories as well. We won for the Dr. Phillips Charities Grant to OCPS. We won for the OCPS Tech Express at Valencia College. We won for the campaign, the marketing around Orange Technical College Alumni Campaign, and for Orange Technical College Seniors Only Program Fair. We have the third-most Golden Achievement Awards in the country. And this, and this is the top.
Wow, that's awesome. I thought you were going to say the state.
Congratu-, no, country, this is national organization. Congratulations to Scott Howard, Dylan Thomas, and Sherry Babinski, and all the gang down there for the tough job that they managed for us and for all of their hard work. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
They are going to get their $500 bonus.
I thought I heard they should get a bonus.
Whenever, whenever everything else is ratified, they can consider that their bonus. Madam Chair, that's all. I have nothing, I have nothing, nothing else.
Mr. Rodriguez.
All right, I do have a couple of quick matters. First of all, we have a car accident that took place with one of our buses a while back. In pre-suit litigation, which is why we don't have an executive session scheduled, we did have our, our, what do they call, they're not our bargaining team. What are they called? Mr. Palmieri? Our negotiators for our lawsuits.
You're so tired right now. We're not going to understand you, even if you made sense, but give it another try.
Our third-party negotiators basically have negotiated a settlement. It does exceed 50,000. The total is 65. You'll be getting correspondence on that with some colorful pictures of the car and so forth. But the reason you won't see it in a executive session, even though it's over 50, is because we're not in suit. So, I cannot call an executive session regardless. When you receive the information, if you have questions, by all means, please ask. That'll be at the next board meeting in July, at the end of July. I wanted to clarify for the record, the 72 hours for a new meeting really is under exigent emergency circumstances where you're going to be voting on final action. Under Chapter 120, we're really required to have seven days' notice minimum. So, keeping that in mind as well would have complicated things for trying to schedule a meeting. But I gave somewhat erroneous information. I was trying to give an answer off the cuff as quick as I could. I know you can convene in 72 hours, but typically, that's for non-final decision-making, you know, a work session or a meeting of two or more members, et cetera. But under state statutes under Chapter 120, your board has to have a published agenda. That agenda requires seven days' notice, which is why we do the agenda on the Tuesday before, et cetera, et cetera. So, if you have any questions about that? Just want to clarify that as well. I want to thank my team for, you know, the ones that are still here. We've been doing our trainings. We finish that up tomorrow with our assistant principals. And again, take great pride in saying we're probably the only district in the state which does such extensive training of all of our principals. We put them through the paces, five hours of different legal topics. And of course, thank the board on the agenda tonight. On the consent agenda was my contract. I know there was probably the worst timing on the planet, given the other items, but anytime my contract comes up, it's never good timing. So, that really isn't ever going to change. Thank you for not pulling it as well. I appreciate that immensely. We still will be doing the evaluations, though, and that process will take place during the month of August. You'll be getting the packets of information during the month of July. And I still want to get your feedback in terms of how our office is doing, how I'm doing with my performance. But thank you for the vote of confidence and for your contract. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay. If I'm remembering, Member Gallo, did you want to give a quick report from a legislative perspective?
Extremely quick. We're, we did meet last week, or this week, this week. Sometime in the very recent past. And we are reviewing our priorities to update them for the next legislative session, which begins in September. We want to make sure that we're prepared, so that we can give them to FSBA. We will be having another meeting that is being scheduled, and the board members should have received an email. And we're looking to bring the board up to Tallahassee to talk to our legislators, I believe, on Wednesday, November 6th. That is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And we have a report from Dr. Gordon.
Very good. Thank you so very much. The first report that I had was, no child should grow up hungry. And I think you all heard, Josh, as he came before the board. I was detained by one of the teachers. And it was fine. And I do apologize for that. And then you, Sky, Sky, Dr. Jenkins has already gotten them with our staff. And you were given the orange sun shades. And we're going to need those orange glasses soon, according to Scott Howard. I think we're going to need those soon. So, hold on to those. But powered at breakfast, your little breakfast pen, how important that is. And you know that Osceola and Orange, they really have about the most children that, that's, we try to do a lot with them to make sure that the students are fed. And of course, all of us, the majority of us, did get to go to some parts, including the superintendent. I was on the board of directors, and I no longer am on the board, but I have enjoyed renewing my board certification and attending some of the recent annual summer conferences. So, I recently attended the conference in Tampa, which was FSBA, FADSS. And they did, the public education is everyone's business. And in the board docs is a report that there were, we have a new president. My schoolboy boss in Osceola County, Tim, he is our new president for FSBA out of Osceola. So, therefore, our president is nearby. You all usually do the coalition, so he's been very active with that. Okay, while I teach, which I enjoy most. I did attend the board of directors meeting, and Ms. Cobert represented us well. And I'm sure she would probably have some comments of what took place there. I got to every session that I was supposed to. I was able to get, I don't know how I did it because I was trying to earn my 20 students with disability. I needed 20 credits in order to renew my certificate. And I was able to travel back and forth to Kissimmee and Tampa every day. And I was able to earn my 20 credits, and I earned my six points. And I only need 15 more to recertify as a certified board member. So, I'll be working on that, on the, there are upcoming workshops that we put. All of you all have those dates that they gave us. And I also put several of the PowerPoints. I was very impressed with the Collier presentation. Several of us attended that, the Collier County, I think Dr. Parlock, Superintendent Parlock, Dr. Jenkins? Yes, she did not go to her superintendent's meeting because she stayed and talked with us. But I would like for us to look at some of the things that they're doing because they too, they're a small county, though, but they did not have the money. And I know we do a lot with magnets. You all are looking at what to cut. We, this previous board have asked, what is costing us a lot is magnets? And you all still really don't understand that, okay? Because if you did, you would have brought that up tonight. You cannot take out iReady right now because Karen, your school needs it, and my school needs it, and Cobert's school needs it, and Apocca needs it. Don't even let me go back. But iReady is our monitoring system that we had to write and tell the state, this is what we're going to be using. So, what I'm saying is that they took and just put what they have in one school. They can do it because it's smaller. But I think we may need to modify that some kind of way. And, Dr. Jenkins, you could probably explain it better than me and what they do. But I put it in the packet so that you could look at it. But everybody that attended that session was very, very impressed with what they had done. And then I put in the future ready, Collier, that's in there for you, along with others. But again, I love what they do. You don't have to run from one district to another to go to the Performing Arts Center. Okay? Every school would have that particular program, and those students were allowed to stay in their schools. But we got our kids running everywhere. That's expensive, okay? And we have them, and then maybe, we don't know the cost of those programs. We need to look at what those programs are really costing us. And that may be money that could be reevaluated, and it definitely can be used for salaries. Okay? So, I mean, we might need, and we have asked that. So I mean, we might need, and we have asked that. Because we were working toward, the previous board, we were working toward, maybe, you know, if you have performing arts here, then it should be performing art in every school. Some kind, like if you've got art in music and PE, then that's what we are looking at. But then we really need to look at, we thought about surveying the community and asking each community what they desire. Because what we're doing, we're just putting things there, even just like the innovation. Did we really, no reflection on you, Mr. Wright, but did we really need innovation? Did we really need that? Was that something that was desirable, or is it costing us more money? I have no idea what the cost of putting that program together was, when we have other programs that that could have maybe been an umbrella under. So I don't know, but I'm just throwing out little thoughts here. Because sometime we go out and we create so many programs, and every program we create is going to cost us money. And you're going to pay that staff to do what they need to do to get it done. But can it be done somewhere that would be good for us? And then how can we do similar in the learning centers, what Collier County kind of, you know, she said she had to do it. She had to put everything that's in one school is in the other. And I think that that was good, that she made that decision. I think it's working, Dr. Jenkins. I don't hear anybody down in Collier complaining. And they used to be the highest-paying county when I was Vice President of CTA here in Orange. They were the highest paid for teachers. But now she's stating that, you know, they have a high percentage of low-income families that have moved into Collier County. So you can understand that. So please take a look at the information that I did bring back. And Dr. Jenkins, if you could get information for me, and I don't know how many other board members are interested, but I'm interested in seeing how she, it may work good in my district, you know? Every school, every one of my school can have that, or whatever. But I love the way they explained it and how they really put themselves together, and then they did the business partners. It's just so many great things that we might could look at that cut costs, and that is one workshop that I went to, that the superintendent said she really cut her costs, okay? All righty, thank you so very much.
Thank you. I have, I have one quick report, and thank you for that thorough report on the conference. My report, Victor, is Victor around? Victor, can you help me with my report, Victor? Thank you. Here's my report, folks. Here's my report. Try...
Look at the top. Look at that.
I think that's when it hit me.
Folks, for anybody who wasn't there, she was energetic.
Everybody kept asking me, when did it hit? I can't fuss me at Dr. Buckman. I said, I don't want to put this hood on, I don't want this, it's through December the 5th, I don't want to do this. And he said, well, you've got one more step to do, fold that over your arms and get out of here. But I thank that, thank you for being there. I'm telling you, you were a rock star. Everybody was saying hello to Woody. Woody was there, everybody was just, Woody! Shonda Evans, you know, she did the student speaking for us, but you were the rock star when the speaker talks about you and everybody else want to meet you. I thought that was so wonderful, that you're loved like that, which is good. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support, and you will be hearing from me. So I thank you all for everything you've done for me. Thank you.
And Member Kestrel Dental, did you have something you wanted to say to close us out?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, Madam Chair, for maintaining such a thoughtful process tonight, because it could have really gotten contentious. And I thought it went really well, and I appreciate the board members really digging in and asking so many great questions, and Dr. Gordon whispering all of her...
Don't say that, we're going to jail.
No, just giving me direction.
I was giving you chocolate.
She was, okay, but anyway, I really want to thank you, everybody.
I'm saying, take this chocolate, Karen, you're getting into hot water.
You were, but I want to, this was a difficult discussion. And I want to, I want to recognize everybody on the board, and the superintendent, and Mr. Rodriguez, for not just taking an easy path. I don't think there was an easy path tonight. And I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate that we all listened to the teachers, and I believe they felt like they were heard. They clapped at the end, even though I don't think it was the outcome that they wanted when they walked in. And I think that through our discussion, we were able to point out the complexity of the negotiations and the process, and I just appreciate everyone's efforts tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I completely agree. I think the transparency that was shown here as everybody, each one of us kind of walked through our thought process and kind of our evolution, was the way a board should work. And one of the things I love about serving on this board is that we learn from each other, literally sitting here at this dais, and that's the way it should work. And never, no decisions are so predetermined that there isn't an opportunity for a change of thought. And that's also very positive and very, very constructive, yeah. And I got to tell you, I am, I'm going to revisit whatever she just said in a minute, but I was so proud of our teachers here tonight. I was so proud of them, because I know how much this meant to them, and the civility that they showed, the professionalism that they showed was really very impressive, and I'm very grateful for that as well. Thank you. With that, this meeting is now adjourned.